This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
Well done, you got to be right away. Let the record reflect that all members of the board are present. That look for a motion on the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And I'll move to the portion of the agenda that is open for public comment. If anyone here wishes to address the board, this would be the time to do so.
Does that include teachers?
Part of the public, yes.
In order to work on the agenda, Greg Beagle, Wapaka middle school band director. Just wanted to give this to you as a reference, don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I gave representatives up here a sheet of paper that says, why the need for two middle school band directors? Okay, I believe Dr. Neen said it was okay to speak on behalf of your department. So, on behalf of Mrs. Roggney and myself and Mrs. Leder, some notes I dotted down, why the need for two band directors? First of all, we implore the board not to split up the middle school band position again. I'm going to be retiring after this year, many of you know that. In 1994, I was hired as the first half-time band director. Enrollment in band goes up, past administrations cut the half-time band director. Now we have seventy-five percent in the middle, seventy-five percent of kids in the middle school in band. Rumor has it that we want to split it up again. Because I'm retiring at the end of this year, why not take advantage of the opening and make it a part-time middle school and part-time chain or charter music class? We need two full-time band directors to fulfill the needs of those middle school students. If you break out my position after this year, you'll not, you will see the eventual demise or programs that are not adequate of our middle school or high school programs, or programs that are substandard. Is there any way to get a music teacher to the charter or chain without taking away from our quality of our middle school program? And I have to ask this, when I set my letter of resignation in September, my position still is not fulfilled, or posted, excuse me, posted. Not sure why. And that's just what I have to say, there's much more on here, why the need for two band directors? If anybody's interested, I'd be happy to give you a copy of that. Jane? Laurel?
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys, appreciate it very, very much.
Anyone else I would like to address the board? Okay, with that then, we will move to the approval of past meeting minutes. We'll start with the February fourteenth regular board meeting.
Still move for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. February fourteenth, special board meeting.
Still move.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The March one, special board meeting.
Still move for approval.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And finally, the March sixth, special board meeting. Motion to approve, is there a second? Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to communications with the district administrators' report.
Thank you President Johnson. Well, March arrived like a lion this year, as we learned the snow and ice build-up on the gymnasium roof had caused the trust system to bend. The snow load has been removed and the area has been deemed safe for use again. The administration is working with the structural engineer, trust manufacturer, and maintenance department to create a timeline for repairs. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has notified the district that the results-driven accountability procedural compliance self-assessment will begin in the 2019-2020 school year. This annual performance report requires districts to document performance on seventeen indicators as required by the Office of Special Education Programming. The assessment will measure compliance in many areas of special ed programming. Common field was recognized by the American Sports Builders Association with the distinguished Single Field Facility Award on December third, 2018. Special thanks go to Rettler Corporation and John Kinnear for their work on the project and submission of the field for recognition. The recognition signage will be displayed in the high school. And just so I can get a sense of what this looks like. Two-part here. There we go. Yeah, very nice. District representatives have been asked to participate in the Wapaka Public Library strategic planning process. Both entities are focused on the importance of literacy and we are happy to support our community partners. Congratulations to Miles Wenberg, Lucas Soto, Tyler Smith, and Rowan Thompson for finishing twenty-fourth out of two-hundred-and-eighteen teams in the state Battle of the Books competition for grades four through six. Way to go guys. Congratulations to Charlie Potts for receiving the President's Volunteer Service Award, honorable mention, for his dedication to community and volunteer service work. Nice job Charlie. As we approach the Ides of March, I hope everyone can let their guard down and enjoy the warm weather and time off with loved ones over spring break. A little literary humor there.
More historical, Caesar, actually.
So concludes my report.
Very good. A couple of quick questions. One, on the trust repairs, have we determined that that will be covered by insurance?
Correct.
Yes.
Do we have any feel as to what the, how expensive any damage may have been?
In our conversation today- We had no weld breaks, so it looks like it's just add-on to the trust structure that's there, so we really didn't have any, it wasn't as severe as projected. Can I ask a question of one of our people in the audience, maybe you're a swim back on? Karen, as long as we talk about the gym, what kind of a disruption did you actually experience with that?
Well, we walked in and I noticed right away that the curtains were hanging down on the floor, so we kind of thought, this isn't normal. So, we brought it to the administration's attention and right away, they just removed us from the gym, which we were able still to use the multipurpose room and the weight room, which was nice. And also, we have nice set of skis, like numerous sets of skis, and snowshoes. So we're still able to get outside with our kids, so we just conduct a business but just did some different things with the kids, so we still had class. So, it worked out well. I mean, actually, and it was kind of nice because some kids were to take snow shoeing and skiing, which don't normally, so we were able to get them out there and experience that.
Good, thank you.
Good, thank you. Anything else on any of our other facilities of concern with regard to the amount of weight that we've experienced on the structures? Okay, very good. Just as a note, following your report, I will let everyone know that the fields division in which Wapaka was recognized, I think the first-place facility was the new field for the Atlanta Falcons, so we didn't lose out to them for single field, but again, a very significant accomplishment to be recognized nationally. Okay, school board reports on meetings attended, are there any meetings that anyone wishes to report on at this time?
School visit, I was-
We'll get to that, any meetings first?
Well, I gave the report the last time I went to the Dells for the human resources and legal, but I pretty much told, and that's all in the minutes, when we had our special meeting last week. So, I don't really have anything more to say. All of that material, however, I will leave with the superintendent as it deals with kind of the latest update in legal and ideas and whatnot. But, for right now, that's really all I have.
I attended a living in Wapaka meeting that was held February fifteenth, the weekend in March. In part because there is data care, community interest in the community garden, as well as the CDC potential for the community garden, perhaps others, other branches. It's a really interesting group of people and lots of good things to talk about.
All right, would you like to start us off with school visits?
Okay, so I was at the chain school and I can probably say I'm the, probably the only one in this building who's ever slept overnight in that building. Back in nineteen sixty-nine, when it was, when it was a seminary and my parents thought it was a good thing if I would explore being a Catholic priest. So, I spent a week, and going back there, you know, and when I was technology coordinator back in the nineties, I used to go to all the buildings and I was out there back then, I haven't really been out there since. And it was, it was an amazing educational environment, not what I expected. I really felt that it was just a, just a warm inviting environment. But I did notice one thing that I was just a little made aware of today. The roof was leaking in three different places and they have one of those inversion roofs where it comes down into the middle. I don't know why they make roofs like that in Wisconsin, but apparently they've had some problems the last couple of years. They've had rubberers there to look at it and they sprung two new leaves last night, so I think that's something that we're going to have to look at down the road here. I'm not sure exactly what it's going to take to fix that. And then I saw bowling for health, healthy snacks today. So the kids were to set up their pins and they had to strike and at first, no one got a strike for the longest time. And then I observed about ten strikes after that, and every time they get a strike, they get either a healthy snack or a piece of fruit to take home. And I can tell you, as, as the class went on, there were more strikes and more strikes, you know, and it was, it was fun to see those kids do that, so, my experience at the chain, so.
Mr. Hyack, would you make note of if it hasn't been reported, make sure there's a follow-up on the roofs?
It's already been, it's already a project.
Very good. Other reports on school visits?
I did a school visit to the Wapaka High School, I don't know if you know where that's at, but it was quite interesting. I went down to see Ms. Lehman and give her a little bit of a hard time because she's retiring, but it's all I saw was Dale Felth, kind of disappointing, sorry. And then I talked with Colleen Truman for quite a while and Joe Jansen, I met in the hall and talked to him for quite a while. I went and talked to Mark Kreschek about the band and the situation at the middle school. And I ended it off having a nice visit with Ms. Herb, it was a very good afternoon.
Betty, do you got anything?
Yeah, I was on the DAKET to go visit the alternative school, so I went today also and spent about an hour. It was, it was a great visit. The timing was great, Mr. Peters happened to be there at that time as Ms. Blumberg. And so, we were able to chat about how the program's going this year and if they have several more students this year than last year. And there were five students in there and I was able to just sit down and talk with them for about forty-five minutes and just talk about the program and how they liked the program and the benefits of the program and how it's really, really helping them. And it was very heartening to hear how something specialized like that will help young people meet their needs and reach their goals. And there was a young man who was so proud of himself because he's going to graduate this year and he said if it wouldn't have been for this program, specifically those two teachers, he wouldn't have been able to do it. So, it was great. And they asked me a little about the school board and what we do and so it was a really, really nice visit. And, you know, having done this for quite a few years and having, in the past, we visited over when it was located downtown in Wapaka and now it's been here for several years and we talked about the difference in two locations and there's pros and cons for both. But the ability of the students to drop in for, spend an hour or two or whatever in that classroom, I think it's a real benefit to have it here. So, anyway, it was a great visit. I'm always grateful for the opportunity.
Well, I'll go next, as long as I'm right next to Betty here. I went out the sunny day to look at our 4K program and walked through the building, it was, it was really fun. It's always interesting to see the boards, the posters, the artwork that they, they have up and some interesting things. The students in our 4K, this was in the morning, our morning class, actually went out and met with the other four-year-olds who normally come in the afternoon. We have two classes there, both of them have seventeen students each. And I, as I found out, they were, they're pretty equally distributed between genders. And the two classes were getting together because they have a concert coming up shortly after spring break and they were practicing. So, we were all able to sing, "She's coming round about when she comes" and I was able to join in. "She was driving six white horses when she come", we were able to do all of that together and had a, had a great time. So, it's always fun to go out and see what they're doing, but it was a really nice atmosphere, kids are great. They're very excited about the concert coming up and so it was fun. I visited with the teachers a little bit, the aides, and had a real nice visit, sunny day.
Very good, thank you.
I guess, I was at the middle school yesterday, actually, the teachers union had a meeting. Steve and I and Dale Felth were there and it was great to see a whole classroom packed full of teachers for the teachers union meeting. It seems like, like the union is doing well and that was encouraging to see.
I attended the Chain Exploration Center's musical that was held the end of last month. It's, everything blends together, we are monsters and every student was a C E C participant. It had dance, it had song, it had love and drama and a moral to the story that people should not be judged by their appearance. The kids did such a wonderful job. They, they worked on, Karen Hatfield worked with them and practiced even as we were having just that series of snow days where people couldn't get to school. It was, it was really delightful and the next day, they were all coming up to Miss Hatfield and asking if they could do another one this year. But, it was, it was really fun. I had seen a number of the children in other settings and some of them just came to life in ways that I haven't seen before. When they got up on stage and did their dances and sang their songs, very, very nice.
I attended the Reality Store that they did for the seniors. It was held down at the Henderson Center due to our gymnasium being closed at that point in time. Really want to thank all, thank all the people and businesses from the community that participated. I don't know how many there necessarily were. Ms. Herb, do you recall roughly how many businesses may have participated? Got to think there at least twelve, something like that, in addition to school personnel that helped out. Anyway, it was, they did it in a number of shifts, but it was very, actually fun to watch as kids were going from station to station trying to figure out how they were going to get housing and what kind of housing that might be, how they would ensure it, whether or not they could afford to get a car. You would roll the dice to find out how large of a family you had. Not sure if the message was necessarily sent that you're better off with a good-paying job and no kids, because there was one of the students, I was very delighted that that was her status and a young man who had four children and kind of a moderate income who really could not go to the entertainment desk to get anything fun there, so. But I think it was an eye-opener for our students, in addition to the businesses and our personnel from the police department there. So you would go over and find out if you got a speeding citation, what that would call you, or cost you, things like that. Just a real good interaction, I think a little bit of an eye-opener for, for some of the students. And I think it brings us back to, in some cases, we may be of greater benefit to our students if we provide them a little more financial literacy than perhaps we are today to prepare them for not only the Reality Store, but Reality Period, so. Anyway, thank you. We will go from that to... Upcoming meetings and other activities. Dr. Neen, if you'd like to run us through those?
Sure, absolutely. April second is Election Day, make sure you get out and vote. April ninth is the regular board meeting here in the community room at 5:15. Moving on to recognition, last week was National School Breakfast Week. I think I saw Dar walk in earlier, so special thanks to Dar and all her staff for ensuring that our students start every day with a good breakfast.
Dar, where are you? Thank you and thank you, Hurry and one hundred staff, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on to committee reports. You have the personnel committee?
That would be me. We met on February twenty-seventh at twenty nineteen at one o'clock in the afternoon. The minutes, they, we started at one twenty-one AM, but really it was one twenty-one PM. And all of the members of the committee were present and we went into closed session and discussed personnel issues.
Thank you.
And meeting ended at four fifteen.
AM or BN?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is charter school authorize or competency requirement. I will turn this over to Sandy Robinson.
We all have a stack of papers related to this, we won't go through all of it, but I do want to just review the cover memo. As you know, the, our charter school, the Chain Exploration Center, received a grant of six-hundred-and-fifty-plus thousand dollars. It's, we are, the school is a sub-grantee for the federal grant, state Wisconsin received. And it comes with requirements, including requirements for the authorizer and support for the authorizer to do its job well.
The authorizer being?
Being the Board of Education.
Thank you.
And, and actually, not in terms of an authority sense as much, but our administrators are considered part of the authorizer team, but not the formal authorizer. For purposes of training, anyway, they're considered to be that. So last year, we were required to have at least one authorizer participate in one training session that the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools, better known as WORKS, held. That was the requirement. I went to a number of them, we had one here in-house that a number of board members attended. We fulfilled our competency requirement by doing that. This year, there are requirements to, the requirements now are geared toward demonstrating that we are planning and taking action and improving the work that we do. And some of this, and being able to demonstrate that on an online program called HeadRush that will be accessible not only to people who are affiliated with the CDC, the board, teachers, administrators, but also every other charter school in the state. So we would in essence become a resource that they could look at and tap into and use some of our documents as templates and we could also search the file and get access to things. So it, you can make it what you want to do, but we are required to not only develop our competencies, but we are allowed to, we are required to demonstrate that we put on that. And so we need to demonstrate, one person needs to demonstrate one competency for this year. That's the authorizing requirement. And...
When you say demonstration, or demonstrated is documentation of how we-
Documentation, yes. How we meant that. So, the WORKS competency, actually, there are competency assignments not only to the authorizer but also to the charter governance council, the charter school leader, the charter school classroom, that would be teachers. And then there's one competency assigned to a non-charter school staff. It could be a non-charter school teacher, a principal, administrator, or other district-level staff needs to participate in one of the WORKS charter school or leader development programs via the classroom or leader competencies. Interestingly, even last year, where the requirement was to participate in one WORKS training, that was probably the most difficult for many districts to accomplish, to find that. So, page three has a spreadsheet that will show you... Are you able to move that up then to page three or whoever has control?
That's ready to move it.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just need to see page three here. WORKS has created, oh, great. Sorry, everyone. WORKS has created a spreadsheet listing all the competencies that each domain needs to accomplish. And I've shown, I, I did, I extracted the spreadsheet that shows what the authorizer competencies are and I think we can make a good case that we've already accomplished for 2019, a certain level of competency within three of the topic group areas. One is community engagement and the competency is provides community resources explaining the school options. Well, our website has links to each of our schools, so that would be something that we could demonstrate and provide as a resource. It doesn't mean we stopped there, it just means that at this point, we've done that. We have, we have established and reviewed the charter contract to ensure alignment with the WORKS and DPI benchmarks and so we could post a copy of our charter contract to satisfy that. And then the plans and sets mission for authorizer with clear goals that align with the community and geography allowing broad funding for charter schools, clear our district mission and priorities, we have the community conversation that we had and we have a policy on charter schools. Now, of course, the WORKS slash DPI will review these to say yea or nay to them, but I spent a good deal of time talking with the associate director of WORKS on Monday about this. My, I had a series of recommendations then of the, on page two of the memo, just four of them. And I do have a recommendation with regard to the competency that we might work on together this year and it is number four, it's an authorizer competency related to mission. And it reads, develops and refines the authorizer's vision and understanding of legal and philosophical roles and responsibilities. And so recommendation number one is that a board committee of three, maybe four people be formed to work on this authorizer competency and then present it to the board as a whole for refinement or modification and adoption. Recommendation two has to do with building the capacity to fulfill this competency well and it involves at least three members of the board and everyone, if they wish and can, attend a training session that's currently being developed by WORKS, which is Effective Authorizer and Governance Board Relationship. This module discusses specific strategies for building strong, transparent relationships between district authorizers and charter school governance boards. The module will provide resources and materials to help both entities collaboratively meet the needs of all students in the district. It is important to note that WORKS, while it was developed- And it's important to note that WORKS, while it was developed as an organization, as part of the federal funding that Wisconsin D P I received, and they do have a mission to help charter schools, whether they got the grants or not, they also are there to help all schools in the state. So the description of the workshop goes on to say, "With clear performance measures and understanding, district authorizers can be transparent with the review and renewal process for each charter school in the district while still allowing for autonomy." So transparency, autonomy, collaboration, meeting the needs of all students. Those are really key points, key starting points for any development for charter schools. It could why, and this would help, would help us develop the direction for fulfilling this mission competency that's outlined. The third recommendation is that we request that, if possible, WORKS provide the workshop here in Waukata so that we could invite the C B C Governance Council and members of our administrative team to join us at that meeting. And Nick at, who's the Associate Director at WORKS, had said that they are willing to come to districts to, if and when they can, if it's possible, to present. So we'd be nice to take advantage of that. The recommendation number four is that two board members attend training on how to navigate this online tracking and documentation system called HeadRush. And again, WORKS, when I was talking with WORKS Associate Director Nick Kretasky yesterday, he generous, he spent an hour with me on the phone, which was so generous. And he then went on to, again generously, offer a training session this Thursday between 9:00 and 10:00. It's a Zoom online tele, it's an online conference, so you can log in via your computer anywhere. I am, I, I, I plan to be there as one of the board members. Is there anyone else? Megan is going to participate from the Governance Council. Rhonda's already had training. Would you be interested?
I would.
I mean, we could have more than, than two if someone else is also interested, but if you would be...
I'm interested.
Then I'll send the Zoom link to both of you.
Okay.
Can you access those from your home computer?
Yes.
Yes. So it's kind of like a conference call?
It is. And, and if you have a camera, your smiling face will be on there too. And it's really nice, it's really nice.
You can turn those off.
I don't think I have that.
No. I can tell you from having them, it's really nice for the presenters if they can see you.
Or maybe I don't know if I have that.
You can find out quickly.
Or you could. No, I'd be happy to.
Okay, so Betty?
Do you realize he's zooming the camera in on you right now?
So Sandy, getting back to that, the training on, on Thursday, about how many participants, I mean, schools, would be actively involved in that conference, do you think?
On Thursday?
Yeah.
It's just us.
Oh, it's just directly, oh, specifically for Waukata?
Yeah, well, yeah, it was just going to be me, and I said, oh, gosh. Let me see if I can wrangle other people.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought maybe it was, again, like a consortium.
No.
There, there are plenty of workshops. And if you go, I urge you to go to the WORKS website and go under Resources and then look at Training, because they have not only real-time workshops scheduled, but they have something called BUDs, which are accessible anytime. You know, if you want to do some training at midnight, you can. The nice thing, the thing that I'd like to promote with these recommendations is that we all have an understanding of what we're talking about here, and we have a conversation about what we're learning in the workshop. I think that's just really, really key. And so you'll find there are attachments. In addition to the spreadsheet, I've included the, we are considered, because the C B C is the, in the first year of the grant cycle, it's a five-year grant cycle, another cycle started this year, considered cohort one, and these are the year-two WORKS requirements. There's more detail then about what is involved in that. And then the third and probably, it's the longest document, is Wisconsin Charter School Authorization Best Practices. It's included as a resource, as an F Y I document.
So at this point, we aren't looking for a motion to adopt any of these recommendations specifically. This is a recommendation being brought forward. They are competencies that we must fulfill, but we, other than item number four, which is for this Thursday at 9:00 a.m., they are items that can be brought together and developed further after this meeting.
Yes, the deadline for completing the documentation on HeadRush is August 30th, 2019. It's nice, of course, some, Nick said some districts are filling it out as they go. Some are probably going to wait till the very end. I like the notion of filling it out sooner in case there's some shortcoming or something that they want to see. And, and this isn't to say we couldn't do additional competencies. Certainly the one related to monitoring, which is number seven on the spreadsheet. Annual monitoring, creates and finds annual monitoring of school success, including monitoring tool and rubric that could be as simple as the criteria is met. Not quite yet. We need some work to do, so.
Sandy, does this document, is this instigated because of our receiving the grant proposal? Or is this for whether we receive the grant, a grant or not?
It is because we, it is part of the grant requirements.
Okay, and is it come primarily from the feds or is this, is this a document used by both Wisconsin and...
Well, I think this is Wisconsin's way of ensuring that they are going to be able to say they've accomplished, was a federal grant, is asking them to.
Okay, so, so when we turn it in, it goes to, say, somebody down in Madison, but then it also moves up the ladder?
I'm not sure what they'll do with the information or how they would share it. If, the, the HeadRush information is accessible to the WORKS people and thus the D P I. So this is a way for them to make sure that we, each grant, each authorizing school district or authorizer is fulfilling its responsibilities to make sure that we're doing a good job growing, getting better. That's, that's really what Nick kept on saying, is this is a growth model. They want to help us get better in doing what we do. And they hope we'll be able to apply what we're learning, not only to our work of the charter school, but to the district as a whole.
Right, okay, thanks.
Any other questions at this point? If you'll send those links out to Mark and Betty and include me as well, I will, I believe, be able to sit in on it and tell, or and still make my meeting in the middle of the block, so I appreciate that.
Do we need to post that?
Yeah, it's going to be a question I ask, yeah. Can you interact, hello? Each other?
Yes.
I think we need to post that.
Okay, well, if I drop out of that and it's just the three of you, well, you should be all right.
Oh, Pat, you wanted it to?
Well, I, I didn't commit, I, I was thinking if I had the opportunity, I'd jump in, but maybe...
It's easy enough to post, I don't mind posting, I told you truly.
Yeah, I think you ought to post it, because I might like to.
Yeah, I need to talk to...
I just don't know if my calendar's on Thursday, right, at the moment?
I need to talk to Nick about how we would make it accessible then to the general public if it's a posted meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I might have to post the Zoom link.
It's pending that information. Let's hold on to posting and make sure that we do not have too many people in attendance on this at this point, as long as there are at least two and we can get future training for others, either from those that do participate or through Nick or however we may want to do it.
And it might be possible for him to record the session as well.
Sure, almost like a podcast or something, yeah.
So at this point, do we want to just have it, you, me, and Betty and...
Yeah, I'll say no then. That'll make it easy.
Okay.
All right, are there anything else?
Not for me.
All right, we'll move on to the Administrator section.
On February 14th, we received a hand-delivery notice from Chartwells, from their Compass Group Division Senior Corporate Counsel David Strauss, indicating their intent to exercise a Notice of Value Rule with the district. Their last day of service, per the agreement, will be on June 30th, 2019. So we are beginning to plan for a transition away from Chartwells and back to a district-run program.
No action needed. Next item on the agenda, calendar adjustment for 2018, 2019 due to weather?
Yes, so we've had quite the winter, as you know. We discussed earlier the impact to the roof over the gymnasium. And it also gave cause to miss six full days of school and have two late starts. And knock on wood, we're still early in March. So hopeful that we won't have to come back to the table and make another round of adjustments. But in the event we do, we'd like to, we'd like to know where we're at. So the administration has considered a number of makeup options. Everything that you see on the list, numbers one through six, has had significant discussion with our Principal Group and our Central Office Administration. And the administration certainly believes that an argument could be made to do any one or combination of those in order to get back to the required number of instructional minutes and hours. However, we believe that options one through three will allow us to recoup the instructional time that we need, bring us back into compliance with a small cushion of time.
Yes, I have one, one question. So your, your recommendation is from options one to three, is it either one of those or is it all three?
All three.
So it's all three. So when I was looking at this, the 15.6 hours, if you add up one, two, and three, that's $17.75. So that's over the 15.6.
Right, just enough for a two-hour late start if we need one.
Oh, I, in case something happens in the...
Right, so that's the, the pad. That's the small cushion I was looking to.
What about for 4K? Because they were under two.
Yeah, 4K has a little more flexibility because they don't have session on Friday. So they can, they can easily add a session in there. And it was really the morning 4K that was short because of the two all late starts on those two days.
So will that be automatic, that we'll just add a session for them?
Uh, yeah, Rhonda and Director Markon will work on that solution.
And then I noticed in this, it said if we go that route, that the last day for teachers then would be Monday, June 10th. And the teachers would be responsible for working two days prior to August 5th, is that correct?
Correct.
Why August 5th?
Well, that's the beginning of the institute.
Okay.
And so as, as we enter into the institute and shortly thereafter that we've got the kickoff. And so rather than trying to track those days when you've got, you know, new contract days and old contract days, we just thought that August 5th would provide ample time if you had to have it.
I think one through three only takes them to the Friday, Betty, not the Monday, right?
But it says the last day for teachers would be Monday.
Oh, teachers, yeah, yeah.
So they're coming back for one day.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then they'd make up two days.
Yeah, I am.
With any of the one through six where we are extending the day, what is the impact of any to transportation and the coordination thereof between buildings?
Yeah, it should be none or minimal. Because we didn't transport students for those six days, our contract actually should come in a little bit under budget. So adding that day will still be a net of five under.
But from a coordination standpoint between the hours for the different buildings or the start, stop times?
Yeah, we, we've had conversations with Director Lena Wiki, and she indicates that options one through three are very achievable.
But options three, does that just pertain to the high school?
For school or all students?
It would be for all students, yeah.
Oh, so it'll be over hours for all the other grades if there is another school like that?
Oh, yes. We, we only, we're only tight on hours at the high school because of the way that we calculate minutes. The elementary and middle school have plenty of time.
But you're still bringing them back for an extra day?
Yes.
Why? Why would we bring the other grades back? Why not just, just the high schools?
Well, I guess, you know, I hadn't given much thought to that. It seems like if you've got families with multiple-age students, you know, if the older students are at school and the younger ones are at home, you know, is, is that going to be an issue for any families? I don't know. But rather than saying we're going to have just this group of students report to school, I mean, what is the, what is the unintended message there? I guess that we just want to achieve a minimum number of instructional minutes and call that good? Or is one more day in a classroom, you know, you know, certainly not going to hurt?
Is this, would they be, then, I'm figuring, it's not that they're going to be attending more than they would have having had a more smaller school year?
Correct.
So it's not that they're exceeding...
Correct.
Regular school year.
They would have been 60 hours over, let's just say, for argument's sake, at the elementary. But with the, the reduction of, you know, six days, five days on the net, you know, there's, there's still 25 or 30 hours over. So they're still going to school less than what they would have with, if the calendar had not been interrupted.
It just seems to me like asking the teachers to have to work in those schools a day beyond what they should need to, to be leaning a little bit hard on them, and it's going to cost the district more.
Teachers are contracted, teachers are contracted for a specific number of days.
Food service and...
Actually, I believe, and I'd certainly ask Dar to speak to this, but I, I think we've got, you know, the food is usually planned out in a, in a budgetary aspect. So, you know, if we, we didn't have school, you know, what would be the impact there, Dar? Is there an additional expense if we bring students back for Friday?
It's, it's a force of peace. We get the, we have the cost of the food and the cost of the wages, but we also get the reimbursement from those emails. So we're prepared for anything though.
How are we prepared? Yeah.
Then we get paid for days that they weren't in the school during the...
Yeah, you're also running into the contractual days. It's June 10th for teachers. Not ideal, right? They're making up on June 7th would be probably...
Please be, please be quiet.
You're the contractual aspect for the teachers. They're now being extended to June 10th, correct? Without the 7th, that'd be next, there is another day, and there isn't there? That's missing.
That's right.
Contractually, so if you would say...
I would say we don't, I think what you're saying is if we don't have the students there on the 7th, the teachers would still have to be there the 7th, 9th, and 10th or 7th, without looking at the...
Correct.
Whether the students are there on that Friday or not.
Correct, because the teachers have been paid for those six days.
Is there, is there, does it kind of change the subject a little bit? Is there any interference with summer school by coming back on the 10th?
No, summer school starts the following.
So it starts on the 17th?
How does it affect the right-of-way time?
Not at all.
It doesn't?
No.
So it doesn't cost...
They, they bill us for every day that they provide transportation.
Okay. So our drivers will get paid for a day, I mean, they're out six days.
Right.
But they'll get paid for one of those five or six days.
Correct.
But if they drive, that doesn't... If they drive that day? As will all our non-contract workers? Or not teachers will get paid a day out of the six that they didn't get to work? The hourly wages, yeah.
Yeah, I believe those folks have already been paid.
For?
For the snow days.
Oh, okay, I didn't think they got paid on days that didn't work.
They're going to wait to adjust to see if there's more snow days, so. Correct, they don't get paid.
Okay, so they're not paid yet?
Yeah.
They're not paid yet?
No, they're paid. They're going to adjust their salary accordingly if there was more snow days. It's easier for us to pay as is and then work backwards.
Oh, okay.
I, I know in the past, I'm talking about the teachers' workdays now, this board has addressed that several different ways. One was that they would have them make it up like this proposal recommends. Sometimes in the past, they moved it to that next contract year in the fall. But then there were other times where they dropped it off and they did not make, the teachers make those workdays. So, there is, I, that's still, that is an option. And I know what, what you guys are trying to do with these learning targets. I know you're trying to get everybody on board to get these learning targets all implemented with the new grading, with the new grading system. But is that, that implementing grading, it's not going to be implemented next year, it's the following year that, that is going to be implemented?
Well, it depends on where we're at. We're ready to implement it in two years, sure, but if we're not ready to implement it in two years. Because we understand that this has caused disruption too. And so, yeah, we have a goal, but that doesn't mean the goal can't be adjusted based off where we're at. We've had conversations with teachers last week and we required to check in with them and to see where they're at. And, you know, if that timeline has to be adjusted, that timeline has to be adjusted.
And I know that, that in-service day that the students came, and, and did they work on that task? Was that the task that they were going to work on during that in-service?
Yeah, absolutely.
That was, so that was one day of, of work that, that they didn't get to work on, on those tasks.
Correct.
And I can understand how that, that one for sure would have to be made up because they had, you had an agenda to accomplish certain things. But, and so that, that is one of the days, that would have been the Monday, if I'm just trying to think in my head for counting purposes. That day that we missed that in-service meeting with students, that would be that Monday or one of the days in the summer. Then we're still asking for two more on top of that. And what would their, on that Monday when they come back, what would the teacher's task be that day? Would it be closing up and getting the grades in? Or would it be working on that, the, the task for the grading system?
Traditionally, I mean, the last day of school is going to close an up shop and taking care of those things as needed. And I guess that's what we look forward to the same this year.
That would, so that's the Monday, the tenth, that's, that you're talking about?
Right.
Breakfast, the celebrations.
And then they close by the end of the day.
Right. And Mark, going back to your early comment, we're really doing a, a combination of all three. So, some of the days are, are just being forgiven or they're, they're almost in lieu of the additional time that teachers are spending on Wednesdays, maybe on the normal contract time. And then, one of the days is added on, and that's June tenth. And then two of the days are flexible carryover throughout the summer. So, we're, we're really doing a, a combination of all three of the practices from the past.
So, you know, and I, I don't want to sound like I'm treading on the, the Wednesdays here. And I see you're adding twenty-four minutes, so that would be until two twenty-four. So, so I state this properly. What happens if you look at the option of just going till three fifteen on those Wednesdays? And then use that last forty-five minutes to still working on the learning targets? How many hours would that recoup if we went just to the end of school day on Wednesday at three fifteen? Because that's another forty-five plus six, that's another fifty-one minutes. A day we would be picking up for April and, and.
Sounds like that would certainly put us well within the margin.
That would, well, but then the drawback is then the teachers wouldn't be on the task to work on the thing. But if they had the two days in the summer, it could possibly be made up that way.
So, you're trying to move that back so that it all ends on Friday, I think is what you're asking?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm, I'm at. If, if we go till three fifteen at the high school and then, then that, we wouldn't, they wouldn't have to come back that Monday, but they can still have their two days in the summer. I know, I'm just, I, I don't have the map.
When you say three fifteen, you're talking about the students?
Yeah.
Because of your discussion of centering on teachers, I want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly.
We'd get to twelve and a half hours by going to three fifteen. If we started that, there's ten Wednesdays after we come back from spring break.
So, if we were to do that, then we also just start school the, what is it, eight minutes earlier? Would that bring us to about the fifteen hours we need?
So, if twenty-four hours is equal to, if twenty-four minutes results in four hours, then the question is how many minutes? You know, how many hours to sixty minutes? You know, is that, is that the equation basically? So, that's ten hours.
You'd have to work an hour. It's spreadsheet or something.
I mean, you could.
But so, twenty-four?
Seventy-five minutes per day difference is what you're talking about between a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday versus a Wednesday? So, if you multiply that seventy-five minutes times the ten, so there's ten left, there's seven hundred and fifty minutes, would be what you'd be adding back into the calendar, divided by sixty, puts you at twelve and a half hours. So, by just getting rid of earlier these Wednesdays, starting after spring break, you're going to add twelve and a half hours back into the day. Student hours, just student hours, correct, just student hours.
So, you're still leaving three point one hours.
So, then you could start the high school day eight minutes earlier as well. And with those two measures, you could handle it without having to mess with the other grade.
Do you add an additional, so it'd be sixteen minutes or anything?
No, so we'll keep the number one and then for number two, instead of twenty-four minutes longer on Wednesdays, have the states at the end of the day on Wednesdays like they used to. And those two items alone, just in high school, take care of the problem. Is that what you're, what you're tagging?
Kind of going that way, but.
Abby, what do you think?
But. I think for, for all you kids following along at home right now, this is the importance of math problems in your math class. Today, we're doing word problems.
I'm curious as to what Abby thinks. I like the idea, like, I know that the, like, earlier these Wednesdays are essential for, like, the teachers, like, working and, like, getting, like, all their work done that they need to, like, grading and stuff like that. But I think if we were to get rid of those and then do the four minutes after school, as I think that's, like, in part six, the second part of that, that would be three and a half hours we'd be adding on, as well as what was it, twelve and a half that we have from getting rid of Wednesdays? And so, that would put us at just over fifteen or fifteen itself. And that would be the, all the hours we need. And that way, we wouldn't need to start early, which could mess with some kids' like schedules and myself included. I'm not the, I don't have my best self in the morning. And although eight minutes really doesn't seem like that much, it is kind of a lot when you're a student. You're running around trying to get dressed and find your homework and whatever else you didn't do the night before.
But you said you do chores.
Yeah, and I also live on a farm and I have chores to do in the morning. So, that'd just be like one more thing on top of all of that if we were to start earlier. That farm kids have to worry about or, like, if, I know a lot of kids, like, how get their siblings ready? And that's another thing they have to worry about. And like, sometimes the buses don't align or, like, parents leaving, like, oh, you guys probably figured a lot of that stuff in, but my opinion.
Yeah, so we, we, just for the sake of everyone and the sake of the discussion, we have been discussing these options for weeks. And it is, it is a daunting task at best to try to find the options that will continue to move all of the initiatives forward and keep us compliant with the hours and minutes requirements. So, what, what we have done is we've put together the, the recommendation that we believe is going to be the least intrusive and also continue to move the district forward. If the board has objectives and they want the administration to bring back another option, then I would say, let us know what the objectives are and we'll work backward from there. For example, if, if, Mark, you, you want everything to be done on Friday or Thursday, let us know. And if that's the will of the board, we can come back next month with a plan.
Yeah, I, I think that's always been, as a teaching, as part of the teaching staff, to, to end by the end of the week for, for the teachers is always a major concern, simply because of summer. And it isn't just our summer school, but oftentimes teachers are involved in other things that start the Monday after. And this is already sort of late. The seventh, we many times have been done by the first or second of June. And again, just for our viewing audience, you know, in forty years, this is the first time we've had to deal with six days. You can see how easy it is if we have one or two.
So far.
So far. I mean, that's why we're having this big discussion. Normally, it's pretty much a no-brainer, we add a day here and there and you're done. But this is a little bit, a little bit trickier. So, my suggestion, along with Mark sort of brought it up, but I, I think if we can end on the, on the Friday for our entire district, always sits better with people, and, and parents as well, I think. That's one of the objectives.
If it's possible, though, for me, the priority would be to try to accommodate what Abby is saying about students and family schedules? But that would be for me a very, very high priority, as I'm sure for.
Yeah.
But I, I am not quite sure how those two things would be possible to go.
We can certainly take a look at it.
Welcome. I mean, bottom line is we're making the best of the worst-case decisions. I mean, no one wants to lose professional development, no one wants to go into second week of June, no one wants to shorten the spring break or go on a good Friday or do all those things we've talked about. We, we get it, we're making, again, trying to make the best of the situation. And as you said, first time in forty years, we've lost six and a half days and it's Mark's fault, so we still have a long ways to go there. I, Mark, I have a question for you. So, on these, on these days that would be in the summer, that would kind of like flexible or whatever it is, is this something that the staff can work from home? Or is this something that they physically have to come immediately, their departments? We want them working as a team. You want them working as a team, so they have to coordinate and all be here. But it could be flexible to the point where different teams might be at different times, or would you think, yeah, we'd be a little flexible on that, so. I think they'd be the best.
Thank you, Mr.?
And, you know, if they come in four hours here or four hours there. Again, hearing from staff, what they enjoy about those earlier days, it's a, it's a chunk of time usually to work. You know, you're not just talking about forty-five minute or a half an hour chunk of time, darkness of hours. That's what gives the best results.
Okay, it seems to me we don't have a clear consensus on this at this point in time.
I think the recommendation at this point from consensus is to take a look at it again and maybe sharpen the pencil and see what else you can come up with. And we'll look at it in a month. I, I mean, we're not going to be able to, to know what the end result is for at least another month, month anyway.
If we need to call a special meeting, we can. The more we delay a decision on this, the less time we have in order to address the shortfall in hours or minutes. So, from that perspective, we will ask the.
So, my only concern about waiting and coming back is, is when's the next board meeting?
That's what I was just saying, we can have a special meeting to address it. It could be next week, it could be whenever. But I think one of the sensitivities that I would like to make sure that we are looking at is the students. And quite honestly, adding one minute to a class, to me, I'm not sure what that does accomplish other than simply making up time as required as opposed to the educational opportunity. So, I think we need to be sensitive. I realize you're thinking about that. That would just be one of my requests as you revisit this. And we can schedule a meeting for, if next week is reasonable, to come up with a final determination.
In fact, that does bring up a question. Are these numbers based on if one of this was approved, it starts tomorrow?
No, they're, they're going to be implemented after spring break.
Okay, and you said that's.
Right, so we'll have to make some new calculations. And what we understand is you want the staff to be done on Friday. Is that accurate?
I think that's certainly one option that would, we would like to see. And I think Abby's idea, I think is very, very valid as well. Maybe to set a morning, go a little later during the day might work, things like that.
Yeah, I'd say in my mind, that's number one.
So, the only thing about going a little later is I believe we may run the busing issues faster than in the morning. Just because of, you know, they're transporting kids between multitude of buildings and what times the students get here, which is why we're looking at zero minimal cost impact and trying to balance those things out. So, the last bus typically drops kids off here at seven forty. The other thing, if you extend it on the day with spring sports and athletics and activities, you tend to have more and more students missing class, especially in the spring if you go longer.
But if you start earlier in the morning, that means all the students in the district have to start earlier?
No, because the last bus, the, the late bus that drops kids off here, seven forty. So, if we start at seven forty-seven, those students still have seven minutes.
Oh, so they kill time once the last drops them off?
Correct.
Okay.
When the schedule isn't as flex, isn't as loose in the afternoon is my understanding, but we'll revisit that.
There's quite a few, my sister goes to the school, she's at the middle school. And from what she tells me, there's quite a few times when, at least in the winter with, like, roads kind of being bad conditions, where she's riding, just as the bell is ringing, she has like just a couple of minutes to get to class.
Yeah, we're not talking about adjusting the middle school schedule, we're talking just here.
But if we had changed the busing, there's high school students who ride the buses.
Right, but what I'm saying is we wouldn't need to adjust the bus route or the schedules and many things because the last bus that drops kids off here does so by seven forty in the morning.
Okay, okay.
So, we're not changing.
You just have less time to wake up and hit your lock.
Yeah, right. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And pick up your lock.
They're established with social connections.
They're established with social connections on their phones.
Right, you're right. Okay, got it.
All right, we will call a meeting. We appreciate your, your understanding of what the board is hoping to accomplish. We appreciate all the time and work that's gone into this recommendation at this point. Okay, next item on the agenda, professional educator staffing for two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Dr. Neal?
Yes, so I'm going to ask Mr. Platon to walk us through this, this document. Ultimately, we're looking for some direction from the board as to how you, you want us to approach staffing in general for the upcoming year. And, you know, we really see that there are three basic options to, to that approach. There's a flat approach where you say, okay, we've got a hundred and sixty-four FTE this year. We've got a balanced budget, bring us a hundred and sixty-four FTE in the plan for next year. And you do whatever magic you do to make that work. Or if we're looking to add multiple FTE and the board is comfortable with asking the administration to just add those FTE and figure the budget out, that's another approach. Or the final approach is if there are opportunities for attrition, then take advantage of those as appropriate. So, that's the direction that we're looking for, the overarching direction. But I'm going to ask Mr. Platon to walk us through this document.
Yeah, so this was kind of a detailed layout of the transition from the chain to the C E C in terms of impact on staffing. That's where this is really rooted in as far as what we can predict and what we can analyze. And so, I wanted to really start out by reminding you back in September of two thousand and seventeen, the board agreed to open up this charter school. At that one time, there was, there was a presentation that was linked that was shared with you. And in there, they did talk about the additional need for staffing that this would cause onto the district. And so, and then I just want to remind you that there's multiple, multitude of times in which information will be shared with the board along where we're at. So, if you scroll down in the page, and it gets into the philosophy of, of the charter school as well to make sure we're all on the same page in understanding why this is, this is occurring. And then the next couple of charts really talk about where those shifts are at. So, that's where I use the combination of letters and numbers to represent cohorts of students. And the colors on there actually represent teachers. And so, if you can follow.
represent teachers. And so if you can follow, this is the next year, this is this year's school year and next year's school year in terms of, the top row there is eighteen, nineteen, the number of sections at the chain of the CEC. So you can see on this chart that they have two sections of kindergarten currently, they have two sections of first grade currently, they have two sections of second grade currently, they have one section of third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade currently out there. Next year, what we'd like to be able to do is there will be, again, two sections of kindergarten, two sections of first grade. We're gonna go down to one section of second grade, a section of third grade, a section of fourth grade, a section of fifth grade, and we're gonna add a section of sixth grade. That's that expansion of the CEC. And so when you follow those, that, that pattern, so in eighteen, nineteen, that K A group, one of the two kindergarten groups, you can see both of the kindergarten groups just slid over to first grade at the chain CEC. That's the K A and K B. As far as staff goes, again, these, these colors aren't really meant to indicate actual people, just for ease of conversation, just to say that those four teachers are staying out there in terms of those colors. However, at the second grade, you see when you're going from two sections down to one section, you gotta do something different with that second teacher. So that's where that red jumps all the way to five V in nineteen twenty. Again, let me be really clear, I'm not saying we're moving a second grade teacher to teach fifth grade, but just for easeability of, of tracking the staffing that goes along with it, that's, that's how the CEC maintains staffing. And then the one A and the two A are groups of new students that would go to the WLC. However, if we look at enrollments, if we do some projections, we're only gonna need one new teacher, because we're gonna absorb that one A group into that current second grade mix of students, and we'll still be underneath our required AGR eighteen to one ratio. However, in third grade, we would need a new teacher out of the WLC to accompany that cohort of students. And that's the transition that would, would happen next year.
Can I?
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure if you're standing nineteen or twenty in the second grade area. There's an X there, and I understand that one of the first grades that had been at chain is now going to move over to be second grade at WLC. Is that correct?
That's that one A cohort from one A first grade to one A second grade. You're correct.
And then the one B?
Stays out of the CEC.
Yep. Because that will become a CEC second grade, because we're adding a second...
We're expanding the CEC in nineteen twenty, including second through sixth.
Okay. And then two A is that where you see an X in the second grade for the chain, two A moves over to the WLC third grade?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
So what is the total number of teachers we have at the building right now at the chain? Either CEC or?
Nine.
What is it?
Nine.
So, and you're, so next year, if we're sitting here a year from now, how many would we like to see at the chain in a perfect world?
Still be nine.
Mm-hmm, would still be nine. Okay. Different positions, I understand, and, but nine this year, nine next year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mark, you have that book on your face?
Yeah, yeah.
I do.
And there's a second chart.
Friend makes sense of this. What's your, I mean, it's gonna help you?
Well...
Trust me, this is taking us hours, to try to simplify as much as possible. So if, if, can I project something?
Yeah, it'd help if you could project a little bit.
Let me just try something here. How come we're adding staff if the number of students are staying the same? Right? I mean, we're not increasing the number of students that are being serviced by the chain of the CEC. So how come we're adding staff? Well, what we're doing, instead of that fifth grade group graduating and going on to the middle school, they're staying. And, you know, we do eighteen to one staffing, pretty standard in, in, well, we do K three. Fourth grade, probably average class size, you know, low twenties. Fifth, fifth grade and beyond, it's, it's different. It's not an eighteen to one scenario. So just because eighteen kids aren't going to the middle school, doesn't mean that you could eliminate a teacher from the middle school. Because, again, how our, our, our grades, our schedules are set up, that doesn't equate to a full-time teacher.
So your recommendation at the bottom of this says only one new to the district teacher would be needed and to be placed...
For next year.
Yeah, to be placed at the second grade.
Oh, the memo is incorrect. I should be, to be placed at the third grade, because the numbers at the second, you know, this year's first grade class can absorb eighteen more kids without adding a teacher. It just bumps up the average classes, but we're still below the eighteen to one ratio.
So that's the two A on your chart there at the bottom?
Correct. Again, one A and two A are just to, just to physically represent cohorts of kids or a class of students.
Okay, so my question originally was, how many teachers do we have at the W, the chain?
Chain.
Was nine, and next year we'll have nine.
And again, I just want to be clear, technical. When you say chain, I'm assuming chain and CEC.
Correct.
Correct.
In the bill.
Right.
Okay. So, and maybe you don't know the number right now, but what, what do you anticipate or, or suggestion in terms of the WLC for next year?
I believe we go from thirty-four to thirty-five.
So you're talking about one...
This is core academics, sorry.
I understand. So you're talking about one full-time position added at the elementary?
Correct. The highlighted portion. And that's, yeah.
The highlighted portion?
Only one new teacher to the district would be needed, was replaced. I should say third grade, not secondary.
I was looking for highlights and mature, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
We've talked a fair amount about the chain specifically, on the CEC, what, share with us, where you see based on, and I know you don't know what the birth rates were four years ago, or whatever the case may be, but where are we on total student population?
I think when we looked at things, I think one of the, the, the wild cards, if you would, would be that four K enrollment, that's hard to project, but pretty flat, or I think we're up two or three kids based off that.
Two or three kids?
Yeah.
Didn't, didn't we add a four K section at the beginning of this year? So I think our four K is, is up, yeah, up a section.
So if we assume four K remains constant for next year, and I realize you don't have that crystal ball, and we move forward, the students A grade, what, what are we looking at as to student population? Is it?
Like a total number, or I'm not fully understanding?
Are we, are, we've been getting smaller over the years. Are we continuing to get smaller? Is our current kindergarten smaller than our graduating class?
Based on my calculations, it's about three kids or more next year compared to this year.
So assuming four K remains constant?
Correct.
Everything else remains quite constant if you're looking at three or four?
Statistically speaking, correct.
Thank you.
So now you're gonna take us to the next level, I suspect, and move to the...
Well, yeah, because what I want to make sure is, is that we're all on the same page with what staffing, the changes. I think when things were initially presented back in two thousand seventeen and so forth, we all looked at it through just the lens of the CEC without realizing it's gonna have a different impact on the entire district. And, and you, you did have some documentation at that one time, I understand that there was conversation that there wasn't any additional staffing request. I, I just don't think it's fair to continually come back and, and, and ask for those things, when that's what we agreed to. But I also understand that maybe you haven't seen it laid out like this, so I wanted to present to you that entire plan, so that you know not only for next year, but the year after, and the year after that, when that, and the CEC is full K eight, what that's gonna look like from a district and from a staffing standpoint. Now, going back to your point, realize that for, you know, the, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, obviously, the further out you go with your projections on enrollment, you probably gonna have a greater variance for, for differences. So I'm using the data, the information that we currently have, you know, IC, to roll those things forward in saying that the four K class size is gonna remain relatively constant. I don't know what the birth rates were, you know, four years ago, and I don't know if they're gonna be two years from today. I, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So these are all based off those projections. That's what it says predicted in this document's why.
I will say, though, getting back to your original comment, I think when we went forward with the CEC, with the charter school, that there was quite a lengthy discussion about there will be some impact. And I think that when we committed, we committed to that.
Awesome.
And I, to me personally, as I sit here, I'm committed to the staffing that's necessary to keep that program and all of our programs healthy.
Good. Excellent. So what, what this does is, again, it carries this out two, two to three years. And so next year, it would be grades two through six at the CEC. And so the year after that, what we'd like to do is expedite that transitional process and bring over Kinder and First from the chain into the CEC, so that in three years, we'd only be adding an eighth grade. The original plan was one at each end of the spectrum. What we'd like to do in two years from now is add two on that lower end, so that that third year we're only adding more on the higher end. And so when, when you do this same sort of math here and you follow the colors and the cohorts of students, again, the colors are hypothetical representation of the teachers. So we're not suggesting that according to this, you'd have a kindergarten teacher in nineteen twenty become a seventh grade teacher in twenty twenty-five, okay? It's just for the math standard, okay?
Right.
But with this, we would have two additional sections coming over, three additional sections, excuse me, coming over the WLC. One teacher from the chain would accompany one of those three sections. And again, we're just being hypothetical here, we're not saying it's that first grade teacher, but just to make the math there go. And at that point in time, we would have to add two additional teachers for that four K A group and for the K A group there. So it, it'd be an additional increase of two teachers, because when we ran the numbers that we currently have, we can't absorb those teachers into our current numbers at the WLC and not add staff. It doesn't work that way.
With the retirement of, I mean, with the addition of one, if we were to follow this recommendation for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year, with the known retirements that we have, what would you project the budgetary impact? And I realize we don't know exactly what qualifications that one person would have, what credentials, and therefore would impact their salary. But having said that, if we have X number of retirements and we're bringing one person in, presumably at a lower pay than someone that's retiring, can you give us any ballpark on what that might look like?
May?
Yes.
I would say for the replacement of a teacher at perhaps in the middle end, I'd probably go right straight in the middle. You'd probably be with a full salary and family, health insurance, potentially would be a net savings of perhaps eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, but for adding one, okay, so that would be versus a retiring, tenured, more highly paid individual?
So, and you, Carl, would you say that that's true on an average? So if you are saving twenty thousand dollars, I'm rounding up now, you said eighteen, twenty thousand, on the, the changeover, would that be true if we had five teachers teaching, we would save a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, it's, you know, it's really an absolute, because it depends on the position, because it's a high, it's a highly competitive market. So a lot of times, you wanna hire at the top end. So...
I, I understand that, but...
I hesitate to say that, but I would say that if your, if your highest, the highest paid teacher salary benefits is eighty thousand dollars, and your replacement is in mid-range, you can take that replacement cost not to be eighty, subtract eighteen thousand off that, and that was your place, so that would be conservative net savings. And if it came in lower, so would it.
Question, if you're wondering, you're talking about bringing the CEC, perhaps expanding two grades on the lower end and one grade to the next end. Is that based on the conversation you've had with the CEC and the plans?
Correct.
That's, okay, that's what I thought.
Correct. And, and they would expand to seventh grade in twenty twenty-one, and then for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, those seventh graders would be from eighth graders. So that would be the final expansion year.
Got it.
And then there would be a full K eight charter school at the CEC, and you'd have four K remaining at the chain.
Got it, thank you. I do have, you know, I have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to...
You've probably asked my same question.
No, I, I just want to jump to make sure I understand. When you were recommending number three and working with attrition, do you want to, could you elaborate on that? I wasn't quite sure whether you were saying...
Yeah, may I, just for a moment? So we're, we're now at the cap, revenue in the cap. And so there's, there's, we don't have that cushion of room that we can go to and say, we'll just levy a little bit more to add these positions. So school budgets are very dynamic and there are always a lot of unknowns. For example, we don't know what budget will be, the next biennial budget. We could be looking at an increase of two hundred, two oh four in year one, year two, that's per student. So you carry that out over twenty-one hundred students, and you're looking at approximately four hundred thousand dollars in, in additional monies or resources in year one, year two. If the special education categorical reimbursement increases from twenty-six percent to, I think they're projecting forty percent, that would be savings in the Fund Ten to Twenty-Seven transfer of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, okay? There's also conversation going on at the state level around incorporating a sustainable aspect of revenue stream that would align to CPIU. So if any one or more than one of those comes to fruition, then we've got resources in play to be able to continue with the high-quality music program, to continue with our, our arts the way they are, or FIAE is staffed at the level that it currently is. But those are unknowns. And so the, the approach recommended in option three was really applying that, that lens of common sense to staffing. And what I mean by that is if, if you've got an opportunity to make a reduction by attrition, let's say in an area that we're, we're going, we're serving beyond what is mandatory. So for example, we're providing music in FIAE at the four K level. That's not required. We, we've just been doing that here, okay? And we've got an opportunity for a reduction through attrition. Does it make more sense to make that reduction through attrition, or do you want to continue with the programming the way that it is, knowing that sometime in the near future then you may be having to issue a layoff notice for somebody who you bring to the district under a scenario that has now changed? Does that make sense? So we're not looking to cut music, we're not looking to cut the arts, we're just looking to continually be mindful of what our resources are in comparison to our expenses, and continue to provide the high-quality instruction that we're known for. So...
May I follow up?
Absolutely.
To just make sure that I understand. So what you're not saying, because the CEC was a part, we're talking about impact to the district that we, the board, to help respond to, you're not saying CEC rely on attrition to staff the CEC at all?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no. The last thing we really want to get to is provide the board choice versus saying, this is where we're at.
Yeah.
And so, you know, by delaying some of the, the hirings through retirements, it was to provide freedom and flexibility. What is your direction? If, if we had already made those hires, that decreases your choices. So we, that's not our role.
Excuse me, just for a second, Mark. That was really to Greg's earlier point, you know. When I met with Greg, every intention to fill the position at the beginning of the year, as we continued through the year and we learned how much overhaul was needed at that middle school schedule, we didn't post the position because we hadn't had this conversation with the board yet. And if we would have posted and filled the position, then there, there is no conversation, because then we, we've already made that decision. So it's not that we don't want to continue with the high-quality music program, it's that we wanted to, the board to have the greatest amount of flexibility.
With regard to the document in front of us, I think it would be safe to, if you're asking for some specific direction at this point in time, I think it would be safe to say that the board supports its original commitment to the CEC and would like to see appropriate staffing for that endeavor, for lack of other term. Whether that's through, you know, the, the movement of some of the teachers... Whether that's through, uh, you know, the, the movement of some of the teachers in the cases that you've, uh, shown here from the chain to the elementary school to the learning center. Uh, and if that's in, in consort with what we're attempting to do with both the charter school and our regular district schools, that's fine. We would ask the board to be, I mean, the administration, as you're going through that, to be cognizant of the fact that, as Dr. Neen pointed out, we don't have unlimited funds. So, we have to make smart choices as to how we move forward. Uh, at no point have the board or the administration advocated that we're going to be cutting in any specific areas. We have to, however, be aware of what our financial and fiduciary responsibilities are to the district. Okay? Uh, whether or not there have been rumors about us cutting programs, there has been. No decision to cut any programs, nor do I believe it's the intent of the board to give that direction. However, said again, it is our intent to be fiscally responsible. That is one of our duties as being members of this board. Uh, and I think it would be premature to give any specific, uh, direction or final direction until we have a bigger picture of what the budget is going forward. To include, uh, one of the items that is on the agenda for this evening, which I believe is following shortly on the item F five, compensation. Uh, without knowing exactly what that looks out like, without knowing what the, uh, potential impact of additional F T Es over the next two years might look like, as offered in this document, um, I think it would be difficult for the board to do any more than give that general commitment that we originally made to the C E C.
I'd like to thank you, Mark, for all the work you've done on putting this data together. This is a lot to grapple with and to try to make it so that we can understand the impact of decisions we'll be making about staffing the district at large. It's really, really helpful to have that, and I mean, I appreciate it.
Good.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, no, you go, you're waiting.
Yeah, I've been waiting, okay. So, I'm just trying, I'm just looking in the future, the next four years here, and trying to wrap my head around the staffing. So, from our presentation, this is what I understand, just correct me if I'm wrong. So, you're looking at a one F T E for next year, just core teachers, we haven't even finished, but yes. Okay, so, okay, this is what, one? And then in twenty twenty one, it's two?
So, two, is that your total, or is that...
No, no, it's an additional two, so we're up to a total of three. And then twenty one, twenty two, you're asking for an additional two? Nope, uh, an additional one, that'd be that eighth grade group, one, okay? So, that's four. Okay. The, the, the fifth equivalent is, is part of this Suzuki music and aid, or I'm sorry, aid position, which I know is also on the agenda for the next item as well. But again, that, that's all part of this transition from the chain to the C E C. That again, as you said, committed to. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page with what does that look like from the big picture standpoint? One, two, so a total of four. Well, four F T Es.
F T Es, yes. But we're, we're kind of thinking that seventy five is the equivalent of the fifth F T E. Right? Because if it's seventy five thousand a year, every year that the C E C is in, uh, in charter, it's really the equivalent of teacher salary and benefits.
And it will be important to hear how some of the things that are being traded and learned to cover that so that it doesn't have a, it's not just a seventy five thousand, we're wrong, here are things. Anyway, we'll be looking through the presentation.
Yeah, I, I want to go back to the, kind of, the opening statement that, that Greg made. And that is simply, um, um, you know, the options that we have. In the big picture, I think what would be very helpful for us is to, uh, take a look at all of our staffing. If you want to go that route. I mean, the C E C doesn't, doesn't work in a vacuum. You, you've made a presentation, we need, we know we need an extra person there to, to fulfill our commitment, okay? So, the impact of that then on our entire district for next year, just looking at nineteen twenty, um, in terms of F T Es, cost that it'll be for us, we'd like to see that, I'm sure, on paper. And then if you have recommendations that, uh, where those cost savings can come in, if it isn't budgetary, just additional money, where that would be. I, I, I started, as Steve said, w- we're not committed here to mo- make much of a decision until we can see that big picture, because everybody has a justification for their program and/or their teacher. But the point is, we, we have to look at that big picture and have all of that data. This is great, but that's that portion of it, okay? So, where do we sit in terms of the middle school band situation? How is that going to factor in? We haven't even talked about the high school yet and how that might factor in. We need to know that before we can make a final decision on, on staffing. But, I will echo what I said earlier. We're committed to the highest programs we can, committed to the C E C, committed to all of our programs. And if I had to pick one right now, I would say to Greg, um, come back with the number of F T Es we need to keep our, and maintain, and figure out how we're going to get them on.
I have a question. Would there ever be a consideration that, um, you would expedite this? I, I know we have three third grade teachers retiring this year. So, is there any thought that, you know, we would bring on first grade and second grade next year into the C E C to...
So, so now you're really getting into kind of the milieu of what we've been hashing over for, for weeks. Uh, and what I'm going to say here is not meant to, uh, create a stir or shock anyone.
Right, it's just thinking out loud.
Right. The, the district is in a very good financial position. You're, you're only now at the revenue cap. You still have a lot of opportunity for movement within the budget. We still have a lot of, uh, positions in the district that have gone by the by in many other districts years ago. Uh, regular education, educational assistance, for example. That's a position that, you know, has, has been trimmed in other districts. Not because they don't bring value to the table, but because it, it was more important to keep teachers in the classrooms with students, okay? Another option relative to your, your question about the third grade is, uh, A G R or S A G, okay? We're implementing, uh, S A G, which requires a ratio of eighteen to one. And again, this is not, you know, I'm not saying this, this is where we're going, but many other districts have moved away from that and they've increased, they've titrated the, the, uh, the ratios of students so that in, instead of eighteen to one in kindergarten, you're, you're twenty to one. First grade, you're at twenty two, third grade, you're at twenty four, fourth grade, you're at twenty six. And you get, you know, you understand how that progresses. And then what you're doing is you're, uh, you're looking at retirements as another opportunity for attrition. But we've got to do those, those calculations if and when the board says, yes, we want you to, you know, to, to save the F T E. Or, you know, F T, you've been at the revenue cap for a couple of years and you've, you know, you whittled and trimmed, uh, opportunities within the budget for some of those big ticket items. I mean, we had a lengthy discussion this morning about this very topic and, you know, I, I, you know, check in with my, my colleagues here. I, I think we are all of the opinion that the, the district is in sound financial status and we believe that we could absorb those two positions for next year and hold all of the programming as is. But it's, it's what's out there in the future that, that really is the great unknown.
Well, and what's out there in the future, as you mentioned, is the great unknown in terms of financial support we'll get from the state level, for instance, that we never quite know. But we, we, being that, if we were in this position every year, technically, um, well, maybe not every year, because in a two-year budget, we, we kind of know. But we, we have been here many times before over the years. And we have to move forward with the assumption that, uh, we are going to get some kind of relief.
The only difference being we haven't been at the cap.
No.
Or a big difference, I should say, not the only difference.
Yeah.
Okay, have we given you enough of a charge to, to try to pull some more of this together from a more global viewpoint?
Yeah, I mean, the other thing we could have done is just presented one year of data instead of the three years of expansion. And I get it, you'd be more comfortable making this along those lines, but to be fair to the staff that are impacted by these changes, we wanted to run the numbers ourselves to say where, where we're going to be from an F T E standpoint. Like, we believe, you know, to be responsible to our own staff to make sure that they know that they're going to be gainfully employed throughout this transition, right? And so, that's why it was presented. Because I, I guess when I looked back for information along these lines that was given to the board over what that actual F T E increase was going to be, I didn't see any of the details. So, I understand there was conversations, but if the conversations is focused on the C E C going from nine staff to maybe ten staff, that was just one part of, of, of the forest, looking at that individual tree. What I was trying to use provide us, big picture standpoint, looking forward. And I think Dr. Neen spoke well when he said, when we talked about this today as a cabinet, we, we believe that for next year, with potential different revenue sources with the budget and whatnot, but even reallocating sources with, with our current budget, if we maintain F T E and add this one position of, of a core teacher, plus we got to talk about the music, the change there. So, I'm just going to say for an argument's sake that you're going to add two staff next year, replace, uh, retirements, so we're clear. We think budgetary wise, that'll, that'll work without an issue. And I understand you want us to come back with more information to support that recommendation.
Correct. Because quite frankly, Mark, we want you to be as comfortable with it as we will be comfortable with it.
The, the difficulty, Pat, is that we may not have all of the information until October.
No, there's no question, we don't know exactly what the state's going to do. But right now, we've been rather myopic on this one area. We, this is what the C E C will look like from number of grades, number of teachers. I think what we're asking is the more global picture of the district as a whole, right?
Yeah, so, let me be fair, so we did have conversations with Mr. Erstbaum from the W L C. I mean, that's where these projections came from. The middle school, been in contact with them as well, been in contact with the high school, looking at where numbers are at. And like I said, I'm comfortable here from these, what I know today from those projections as far as student course requests go.
You're comfortable here, meaning this is global, this is including high school, this is including middle school?
Right, we have to have some conversations on the fine details of student course requests. We finalized more recently for some of those areas. Um, but, yeah, I mean, the, the special schedules is already projected for elementary next year, and that's where in that recommendation, there could be a, a cost savings of not replacing Ms. Phelps' position at a full-time, but rather replacing it at a half-time. And again, that was based off conversations of had Mr. Erstbaum and Ms. Hare and then mocking up the schedule with, with some certainties there. But again, before we finalize those things, before I go back to the high school and middle school and say, "You got to reduce F T E or you got to stay exactly flat with F T E," we, I needed to have some direction here. Right now, they have been told to stay flat with, with F T E, don't look for an increase. And, and again, these projections are based off those conversations.
So, with your conversation with Mr. Viva, what would you say to him at this point?
That'd be a replacement. But, but again, I'm not the one that makes those decisions, that's what I'm going to the board.
But that's what you're projecting.
That is, that is included in this projection, yes.
Correct. And again, that, that's the recommendation.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, normally we don't go back out to public comment, but you just went like with us.
I, I was just gonna, I, I appreciate your letting me interrupt. Um, this cohort said, potentially, my position would be full, full-time replacement.
Right.
But, um, in my little thing earlier tonight, I asked, would the board consider it'd be a full-time to stay at the middle school, not be a shared, uh, teaching position at the chain or charter school?
It's never been a conversation about a shared position, so I don't know what that's coming from.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where that's coming from.
We, we, well, thank you for mentioning, but we have never heard that either. So, we'll have to take that into consideration if it ever comes forward.
We would appreciate it if you'd say so.
So, but, and, and maybe some of that is in, in, um, lack of clarity over this additional request. And request may be the wrong term, I just want to be really clear with that. Um, because when you enter an agreement with a charter, equal funding is a big part of this. So, um, what the C E C is asking for with this additional position, and I asked for clarification in the Suzuki music part, is, so we got to come up with those funds to pay for the instructors for Suzuki music. The grant doesn't allow you to apply that towards staff or staffing. It's the way a lot of charter schools, um, get those dollars to apply for that specialized staffing is by, I'll just say, reallocating their current F T E. So, instead of having, let's just say, sixty percent physical education teacher work with the chain in the C E C, they may want it down to thirty percent next year. And, and because of the, the charter, and, and being a charter school, you have a little bit more flexibility in your requirements on education delivery, they could, uh, not have, they don't even technically have to have physical education as part of their curriculum or offerings to their students. So, that's how that reduction could be. So, so you look at that reduction from a P E standpoint, you can look at that reduction from, uh, the recommendation, um, music standpoint, or from an art standpoint, library views. You, you start looking at where you could, uh, I'm going to say reduce, but let me be clear. We're reducing time in that building, but we're not looking to reduce teacher contracts by those F T E. So, if you have somebody who's out there as a sixty percent, and through the staffing and through the, the charter agreement, they only need them out there as a thirty percent, we're not looking to cut somebody's contract by thirty percent. We would just absorb that thirty percent into another building, because again, as was laid out here for next year and the next couple of years, there's going to be additional sections shifted to the W L C. So, it's not a cost savings to the district of, of, of that reallocation of funds. However, we have to be cognizant that, of that charter, there's an equal funding part. And so, to be able to, to offer that, um, Suzuki music program, for example, which is a great attractor and what makes the C E C a unique option in charter schools in our area, we have to figure out how, how to pay for it. And so, maybe that's where some of those conversations have come from. And again, we're, we've never had the conversation of shared staff along those lines to make those things happen. We've had conversations over what is that dollar amount and how we actually get there look like and what are those figures going to be, and, and trying to project that forward as much as possible. Because the other part of it is, the charter school being project-based, if those students and their projects deviate from what we traditionally offer, uh, we might have to offer some things different out there. And so, there, there needs to be that flexibility that's built into a charter school, especially one that's project-based as well. But I can certainly tell you from, from our conversations, uh, for next year, the request is for roughly seventy five thousand dollars to, um, pay for that Suzuki music F T E and also, uh, an instructional aid to provide support to students that they can still have, um, world language opportunity, some physical education opportunities, and some makerspace opportunities.
But we can, we can move on to that request in a moment, but I, I will circle back to again, based on what we have rep- indicated to you here. Do you have what you need to provide us with in consort with a business manager? The global look of, from a budgetary standpoint, from an F T E standpoint, where you would project we will be next year, based on the direction we've given you? That direction is the continued support of C E C, i.e. one F T E, if that's what it takes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That is continued, okay? We, we do not have liberty to spend endlessly, period. But we do want to support our students in all ways we reasonably can and should for their education. So, we're, we're not going to parse on whether or not it's this one, because I believe, based on what you're representing, and we still haven't even gotten into what the salaries will be going forward. But again, that's a global thing. But I think we've represented to you that we are going to give that commitment, or we believe that commitment will indeed be there once we've seen the global impact. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Is that enough from your perspective, yours, and yours, and your staff's? Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us up to, uh, the C E C Educational Assistant, uh, part-time request.
Hi, everyone. Um, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity from everyone at the C E C and kind of the journey that we've been on. It's been, um, really fulfilling for all of us and helping involved. And so, the board is responsible. responsible for that, so thank you. I wanted to kind of talk to you about the memo, so in front of you, I wanted to give a background about what Suzuki method is, and then how we came to this program for our students. And, you know, the fact that what Mark was saying, historically, our charter schools are offering different methods for teaching, they're offering flexible schedules, and so what happens for our students in our classrooms is that in the morning, it's very much traditional, they have language arts and they have math, and then in the afternoon, they break out for their project time, and that's when they really do all of their projects. And so right now, the project cycle, and Sandy said, the last one was a musical, right now, the project cycle is Project Lead the Way, which is our engineering curriculum that we have purchased for our grant funding. And so that is something that is a gift with having a charter school. We're awarded that flexibility for our students. And part of our vision and mission when we were originally creating the school was to make sure that our kids can explore our passions, or their passions, and seek out what those passions might be. And so part of our responsibility as the Governance Council and as the leaders of that school is to find what those passions may be. And so when we started the charter school, I know that when we had our community meetings, the idea of having an orchestra, an string orchestra came up repeatedly. And so that is something that we set out when we wrote the grant application to the state of Wisconsin for the federal dollars, we wrote in the Suzuki program. And this was done because we were recommended them, because they are out in University of Wisconsin Stevens Point. It's one of the only programs that partners with a college or university. And it's, the Suzuki method is an internationally recognized method for teaching music. And so how it differs from other instruction is that it bases its approach on a linguistic scale. So as kids are picking up language, that is how they're treating music like it is also a language. And so they're, that is, they start by listening, and then as, and they're listening to other people, they're listening to themselves, they're one-on-one instruction, they encourage, highly encourage parent participation, so oftentimes, parents are learning the instrument along with the student, which is also so integral to what we've been trying to do. We, as part of our grant application, it was, and also the community conversation. I know that parents want to be involved. They want more options besides PTG, they want real options, and this was something that struck us as well, as we were learning about the program. The other main thing that really got me was the philosophy of Suzuki. So the philosophy is that every child can. So you, it's the idea that people like me are capable of doing it, even though I was growing up believing that I am not musically gifted. And so the idea is that no matter who you are, and no matter what your background is, you can learn to play music, and you can have that power in your hands. And so that was something that, for our students, I think with how we wrote the grant and our vision, and where we see the culture of the school going, and what we want for our students, and then option to, to give them that option, to understand what that is, and not, not in an environment where it may not be attainable for some, but attainable for others. And so that is kind of how we got to that. When I think it struck everyone is when we invited Suzuki to come out to Chain Elementary last May, and if you scroll down on the memo, we included pictures of this event. They put on what they call the Musical Petting Zoo. And so every kid in the school came down in groups and in sections, and they were able to sit with a Suzuki trained instructor and actually play the instruments. And I think, every time, I'm sorry, there's one particular student that, my son has gone to Chain since four K, and so there's one student that I always think about when I think about this, is that he struggles to, I'm sorry, he struggles to engage on a daily basis, and he struggles socially, he struggles emotionally. And I saw him sit in a teacher's lab, and I saw him, I saw a facial expression I had never witnessed, and I'm not saying he's never had at that chain, I have never witnessed it. And so it was incredibly powerful, and in that moment, I thought, this kid has to have this program. And every kid needs to have the program and have access to it. And so what we did is, we, we looked at possible options for how to pay for this and fund this program and bring it to our school. We talked about looking for grant dollars, we talked about having parents pay a portion, we talked about so many different options. At one point, I was scratching my head, wondering if it was going to happen. And so what has gone on is that we have been, with works and with the grant application, we have been involved in so many trainings, we have been connected with charter schools across the state. I went to the National Charter School Convention and talked to so many different charter schools around the nation. And the common theme was that, for programs like this, when you're looking for sustainability, when you're looking for something that's going to last, and you're not trying to put something on the Governance Council where they have to raise an exorbitant amount of funds every year and wonder where it's going to come from, they started looking within. And so we started looking at, what do we have in our budget, what are our options? And so it was not a light situation, it was just that we want it all, and we love PE, we think it's incredible for our students, we want them to be outside, we want them to have those opportunities. And so how do we get that and still have Suzuki funding? And so when we were looking at everything, the things that we had to give up were library, some of traditional music, and our PE. And eventually, we will eliminate hot lunch to also recoup some funds to pay for this. And so it was months of deliberation, it was not light. The money that we're asking for is the money that has been traded out for equal funding, and much like Mark said, they're not reductions. So I don't want to pull the wool over anyone's eyes, but, you know, as we're looking here and seeing what are our options, this is what we're looking to do. And so part of this recommendation is to ask for the aid that Mark also mentioned. So our aid would then run a PE class, they would run our foreign language, which we currently have plans to do online, and use online programs, and then we would use them for face, and then, what are my dreams, oh, Erdemaker Space Lab, and all of that is in the grant as well. And so what I want you guys to also know is that in our grant, I wrote the program in, but we also wrote in the cost of all of the instruments. And so this really is our opportunity, and our funding period, we have to, we have to spend all of our money from year one, probably to claim it and do everything we need to do, probably end of April to be careful. And so all of those instruments, thirty thousand dollars worth of instruments are in that first year. And so that is something that we can offer the students, and there won't be a cost to anyone. We can go to parents and say, this is what your child is going to do, we're requiring it third through sixth, it's not a cost to you, no strings attached. I think of that in there. Anyways, but, so we're asking for the recommendation of the aid, and that is our future plan. I'm happy to answer questions. I also included as much as I could about what Suzuki has to offer. It has much more than I've just said, so forgive me, I get very nervous, so thank you. So questions and concerns, anything?
Any questions?
I have just one comment. We're in the very early stages, excuse me, and I know Sandy and I have talked briefly about this, and I've talked to the, the board has talked about it. But we're looking down the road as a possibility of entering into an agreement with the city on a Fund 80 program. Fund 80, which would allow us to offer programs within our district, and be the taxing entity and work with the city, for either summer programs or programs very similar to what you're talking about, the Suzuki program. That's an avenue in terms of an increase in funding that we're just, just beginning to explore, okay? It might be something that will be very helpful in the future if we move in that direction. So I'm telling that, and I'm telling everybody that, that we're looking at that because I think it's important for you to know that we are exploring other avenues of how we can, in fact, fund programs, just like you're talking about. And maybe additional programs we haven't even thought about yet, that somebody else would come in and we would recognize it as extremely positive for our district. And this might be one way we can look at that.
Just a comment about Fund 80. Fund 80 could not support, like, classroom projects. Now, Lina does have an after-school program for their elementary, I think, through third grade or third through fifth, it's an after-school program that they fund through Fund 80, and Aaron Jensen and I are actually going to visit with the director of that to find out more.
It's an extension.
But as a supplement that might be extended, I mean, if we want to go down the Fund 80 funding road, it could be something that would make Suzuki more accessible, more widely available.
Right, yeah. It's something that, again, we're just exploring, and all the ins and outs of it, but it is an avenue that we have not tapped into in the past, but hopefully, it is something that we could use, and it would, as Sandy said, it would simply promote, mitigate, and help with the whole concept. And that would only be one program, there might be others out there that would be of a similar nature.
Oliver, we really can't go into detail on that, since it's not on the agenda.
No.
The types of things that might be considered, so, under regulatory constraints, while I leave, any Fund 80 discussions at that point will let us know.
Will soon.
Excuse me. Okay, any questions? Yes?
I'm just trying to put a couple things together. So this part-time educational assistant at the CEC, is it, is it an educational assistant or is this a teacher?
Some, it would be an educational assistant at a scale. The person would not be required to have a Wisconsin teaching license in that field, but in the job description, we provide things like we have in there that they should have a qualified education fee and different standards and implement them. So I guess it's more qualifications required than we typically write in the job description for an educational assistant.
Yeah, and I understand that charter schools, you know, operate under different sort of guidelines than the public schools. So would this educational assistant be assisting another certified educator, or would this educational assistant actually be taking the kids in, let's say, if it was a FIED class, would they be with a FIED teacher, or would they just be taking these kids?
No, there would be no FIED teacher, they could be under the, the direction of a, one of the district FIED teachers, but there would be no FIED teacher present.
Yeah, and I just want to bring this up, because we were talking about summer school, and I think that we've all talked about people who are teaching different classes in a summer school. I think the board's consensus was, we really want certified teachers teaching certain classes that require certifications, and I know we've talked about that before, to make sure that we have the proper training in those positions. It's a sticky slope when we start getting into hiring teachers who do not have the credentials, because if we start doing that here, you know, where is that going to stop? So that's my only concern by having somebody who's not certified.
I don't think you're allowed by law to do that in a traditional school.
I know, not by law, you're not required.
I mean, no, you're not allowed to hire someone without a license, only in a charter school.
Only in charter schools.
You could never do that in a traditional school.
Well, even if it doesn't, right here, what stops you from at the charter school to bring in more than that?
Certainly allowable and authoritative of the CEC, Governance Council would decide those kinds of things. I know there are charter schools, for example, who bring in people who may not have a music certification to come and teach strings to their students, or have other expertise, but not the degree. I understand your concern, Mark, and I, you know, we do have the measures that will be evaluated from the CEC each year on to see if they're reaching those goals and targets.
I would have to emphasize with what Sandy is saying, that while the charter school has a significant level of autonomy, we have the responsibility to monitor that the education they are providing is in line with the school's mission. And so, yeah, there's, they do have the autonomy, but we have some responsibility as the grant author, I mean, as the authorizer of the charter school, so I think that's a little bit of what Sandy's talking about here as to where they, under contract, can make some of these types of decisions, but we ultimately have to make sure that the result of decisions they've made are providing the education that is expected. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but it did in my mind.
I just feel a little surprised to see that there was a request for a motion to approve a part-time educational assistant at the CEC by our board.
That's not my memo.
No, I think that's more of a, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's more of a request that everybody's on board with what their decision has been, or the direction that they are choosing. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I guess I contacted Carolyn what the proper procedure was, and she said, when you're having a new position that didn't exist before, it ought to come to you?
Well, under normal circumstances, that would be the case. If the charter contract, if the charter contracts require that, in normal positions, that's what they're acting.
Because there's still employees of the district, and we just want to make sure we're on the same page with everybody.
I guess, from my perspective, I'm glad to have this information and have a chance to respond as to whether I thought this was a violation of the contract, and if it's not, then that would be where I would lay in. It doesn't seem to be a violation of the contract. And at this point, we aren't looking at a job description anyway.
Well, and if I'm, unless I'm reading this incorrectly, we're adding, the Chain Exploration Center is adding an instructional assistant, is that the title?
Right.
Well, we have instructional or educational assistants all the time that we don't have to vote on, do we?
We don't.
Because they're put into the consent agenda.
If it's an additional position, you vote to add an additional position?
Oh, I get it.
So we have...
Not, not, I get it, if it's an additional, okay, all right.
But whether we, I guess, this is actually one of the reasons that I thought competency number four in that workshop just seemed so perfect, to just determine where some of these lines are, because the, our job descriptions are part of the policy manual.
Realizing that the CEC has a bit of a deadline to the grant, if I'm understanding all of that correctly, I would entertain a motion that might be something along the lines of, if appropriate and necessary, under the contract, I would move.
If appropriate and necessary, under the contract, I would move that we approve the addition of a position that is an educational assistant.
Not to exceed seventeen hours, please.
Not to, I was just thinking in terms of a description that might be different, adding a position description to the position descriptions in our policy manual, but are you looking for, if it's appropriate under a contract, I need to approve the addition of a part-time educational assistant in the CEC, not to exceed seventeen hours, please.
Yeah, the reason I'm suggesting that, if I'm... Yeah, the reason I'm suggesting that, if a motion is to be brought forward, then it'd be brought forward that way. Without the contract in front of us right now, it does.
But I'm not sure that if, I, I was looking at it. Yeah, I opened it up to. Sorry, I haven't opened it and I've done some. Okay, there we go. So the general parameters for autonomy for, okay, so the CEC shall, this is in section four, governance structure of the school, four point two, governance, autonomy, and council membership. So I'll skip about the council membership, but there is a section, and this is taken directly from the statutes, the CEC shall have autonomy and decision-making authority over the following. Includes expenditures of allocated budgets, grant funds, and funds donated specifically to the CEC, curriculum and instruction, policies and procedures specifically unique to the daily operation of the school that are not addressed in existing CEC policies. But I, I think the curriculum instruction and expenditures of allocated budgets is probably key there. And then when we get down to employment.
So, but if the employment payment comes out of the grant proposal, funding, then we don't.
It won't.
It won't, but there are sections, yeah, it won't. All hiring and staffing decisions shall be made by the SBW School District Board, Packet Board of Education, and the court does with the decision of the CEC-GCC. And then they talk about a hiring committee and then, this is actually, has to do with hiring candidates they've interviewed and we just simply give the names to the board and the board decides.
Much like a consent agenda item that we might have.
And that's where they've been placed in the process. There are sections, let's see.
So, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I do.
I mean, it's still on the table?
Yeah, it's, if it's appropriate to the contract, and I think, I think we can, I want to get this.
With the motion that you've made, we would take the time to review the contract to see if it's required approval. If it is, and your motion is passed, then that approval has been given. If, however, upon further review of the contract, rather than a brief review, it is not required, since you said if appropriate, it would not actually be an active motion as such. That's why I could qualify.
A second or motion?
Motion and second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Item F five, compensation for two thousand nineteen, twenty.
So, just a little bit of background for the board. We've got ten million dollars more or less salaries for our teaching staff. When you pulled in the other staff, secretaries, custodial, educational assistants, therapists, administrators, you're looking at a total wage line item in the budget of just over fourteen million dollars. So, with the implementation, or, not the implementation, but with the notification of CPIU at two point four four percent, the administration put together three costing options. A two percent increase, which has a total packet or a total increase to the budget of just under three hundred thousand dollars. A two point two five increase, which is an impact of three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, some change. And then to implement CPIU at two point four four percent brings in three hundred and fifty-nine, almost three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, there's a fair amount of information there and, you know, if the board is ready to move forward, we'll take our direction tonight. If the board wishes to have this item returned at a meeting next week, certainly can do that as well.
Does the, do the numbers take into account the decisions that we made tonight in terms of additional staffing?
No, that's, that was, that was based on snapshot right now. Is that accurate, Carl?
That's the typical number.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Okay, we've got three levels of potential increase in compensation listed here. We certainly, as Dr. Nian pointed out, are not necessarily required to make a decision here and now on a specific level. Realizing that the projections or castings are always a bit liquid, if you will, because it does not take into consideration all of the things such as the addition of one FTE or a partial aid for the, or educational assistance for the CEC of seventeen hours, et cetera, et cetera. Personally, I would like to see what the rest of the budget is looking like before we make a specific decision on what we might elect here, but that's my own personal thoughts. Obviously, this board is, if they would like to pursue something at this point in time, certainly.
Well, I just would like to ask.
Vote on expenses with a little understanding of the revenue. It seems premature to be voting on it.
Yeah, the tricky part there, Dimitri, is that, you know, contracts typically come out around May and you may not know what your budget is until sometimes October. So, you can either, you know, freeze salaries and give a contract for the same amount as it was this year and then go back and issue new contracts and, you know, catch up pay when the budget becomes known, or you can move forward and.
Do you feel that you have less information than usual at this point with the budget number?
I don't think so. I think it's just, you know, you haven't been at the cap before. And so, you know, you have that flexibility, you have that room to increase the levy should you need it.
Do you think, are you more optimistic though because of our governor?
Oh, certainly. Absolutely. Yeah. And, you know, it's not going to be a one-sided budget, it's not going to be all education, you know, when you have to add government and set this frequently, you get moderation.
So, Carl, do you want to make any recommendations here or any thoughts from your perspective on where we sit at this point?
I told you, by the way.
Yeah? You're the money man.
I would just say that, you know, I always give a budget snapshot, it's usually late in June, usually by that time, the salaries are implied, the salaries are usually implied by May, before release of district. And the Consumer Price Index is what it is, it's two point four four. And I think that in, you know, that's probably the number to work, work from. And, you know, as we get further into it, of course, we don't know, we won't know our revenues fully until October, probably late in October, perhaps if the legislature can't agree, it could even be delayed longer. One of the things I could do is I can put the conservative estimate, flatline it, and, you know, show you where the revenue cap is in that direction and go forward with that real simple snapshot. But there's others areas of the budget that we're all, we look at every year behind the scenes. And one of the things we're hoping to look at is not a hundred and forty thousand dollar food service operation transfer going forward from, and sports, so. And we'll, we'll look at all the purchasing services, we look at all our contracts, and so there's, you know, anytime you increase this, like last year, two point five percent, there's a reduction someplace else going on behind the scenes, perhaps in maintenance, perhaps in, not necessarily in utilities, but to result, we're always looking for savings elsewhere, so.
I think that's what the board is, or at least some members of the board are requesting at this point, is you may not be in a position to give any absolutes, especially on the revenue side, but largely on the expense side, what your projections might be. No, you don't know what the cost of oil per barrel will be in two thousand twenty, and therefore what the cost to heat these buildings will be, but I think if you can give a reasonable, as you put it, flatline projection with any known increases necessary due to facilities, whether it's through the capital expenditures that you may be projecting on a normal maintenance schedule or any other items, such as the change in food services with a decision to try well to leave, those types of things, if you could give us that, that initial look, it would be very helpful before we can make a united form decision with what we might be projecting.
Absolutely, and one of the things we'll be, we're, this Friday, we're, we're getting close to negotiating our health insurance as well, and that's, that'll play into it. We're projecting as no increase, so, but if that goes up, fluctuates a little, that'll be a known entity, so, yeah, absolutely.
All right, is that satisfactory to the board?
Yeah. When do you need to have a decision by?
Well, you know, I think we'd like to stay on the same calendar that we've been on and that the staff has been accustomed to and has used the contracts in, in May so that, you know, when they leave, they, they can plan accordingly.
So, could we ask then, then, following up on that, that we bring the same issue back a month from now? Would that be enough time for you to put together some information for us?
You're saying May, correct?
No.
You wouldn't have, you wouldn't necessarily have the insurance aspect at that point.
Correct, it's getting close and the property insurance and insurance.
Realizing there may be some factors that you don't have readily available, if you either flatline them based on your experience in that specific category, or if you even apply at two point five due to the fact that, yes, there's, there's a likelihood that that kind of service may go up or that type of utility may go up based on historical, and there's no guarantees, but we're just trying to get a bigger picture before we can dissect into this area.
And if it's on the agenda for April and we're just like tonight, we don't have, still have more information, we can always move it back, but we might be able to have some more conversation about it.
Yeah, absolutely, so I'll, I'll have that for April meeting.
Didn't we also have some discussions that there were some things that were going to be brought back when we were determining the budget for next year relative to some groups or?
Yes.
Okay, will that be incorporated at the next meeting as well?
At the next meeting also, yeah. So the second half of this compensation memo is only germane to the teachers. At the beginning of this school year, some of the WTA officers had approached the administration and asked if there might be an opportunity for those of our most veteran staff members who have accrued the advanced degrees and the maximum number of credits and the maximum number of years, and we're in that lower right-hand corner, if there was an opportunity to take the stipend for institute participation and roll that amount into their contract amount for the subsequent year. And the board will probably recall that in a number of years past, you've implemented a five hundred dollar one-time payment for those staff members who are in that cell and only realize a sixty-eight dollar increase from one year to the next. So, the, the task brought to us was to figure out if, if we could do that and if it would be sustainable. And so, we've, we've made some calculations and this is depiction of, of how it does become sustainable. So, in this example, we've got eleven million dollars for, for salaries. If the board implements CPIU in this example and it's two point five percent, then the amount of money that would be going into that, that salary structure would be two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, hold that number aside for just a moment and then realize that we've got thirty-three teachers that are in that lower right-hand cell that are essentially stuck. If all thirty-three of them participated in the institute and were eligible for the five hundred dollar stipend, that would come out to approximately sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. So, if you take that sixteen five from the two seventy-five, now you've accounted for that money rolling forward year after year, but the amount that's going to be invested back into the matrix is no longer two hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's now two hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred. So, that makes the, the impact more of a two point three five percent than an actual two point five percent. So, that's how, that's how we believe that this, this request can be achieved and, and is sustainable and is a great option and opportunity for most veteran staff members who realize a small amount of growth in that, in that final cell area. So, one of the things that I did over the last couple of months is I took this explanation out to all the buildings, all of the staff members, and then I asked them at the conclusion of, of our time together to get in touch with their union officers and their representatives and indicate an up or down, would it be supported by the masses? And, you know, as Cory is in the audience tonight, he indicated that the support was more than two to one in favor of, of this option.
Cory, you know, maybe, Cory, you know what percentage of our teachers are in?
I don't know.
Over sixty percent.
Sixty percent, so, but the other forty percent are not surveyed or they are?
So, Dr. Nian did direct all staff to discuss with building officers their point of view whether they were. And everybody had an opportunity to do so and not everybody elected to do that, but everybody had an opportunity and everybody at every building knew who the officers were because Dr. Nian could make a point to say, please go and talk to.
Thank you, thank you.
Cory, maybe you could explain just kind of specific. If, if you follow this model in terms of, and you're one of those thirty-three people down at the bottom, what kind of percentage then would that person receive based upon that, the model here in terms of, it starts out at two point five, then we see a two point three five, what about the person who's frozen in? What kind of percentage are they looking at?
I think we did that calculation at one point and it was right around one percent. It wasn't, wasn't.
It wasn't that.
Yeah, I don't know that it was one percent.
It wasn't that. You're talking five hundred dollars.
Right, you're talking five hundred dollars.
There's someone that's down in that corner.
Plus whatever might have generated through.
Eighty percent or less.
Pardon?
About point eight percent, less than one percent.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a mad petition to call.
And again, kids, the importance of math.
Just wondering, curious.
So, the, the board can certainly act on this at the same time, but we wanted to share that information.
Any questions? Okay, we're being done, moving on to monitoring.
I wonder if we might take just a real brief break.
Yes, consider ourselves on break.
Fifteen minutes?
Well, we gotta come back to that anyway.
Okay, we're to the section of the.
Kind of like.
Meeting for monitoring, and this is technology updates. I'm a little fearful of the fact that they have VR goggles here, because if we have those on and you're recording, we're always know what, only knows what it's gonna look like. That said, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, hey, thanks, I don't get to talk to you very often, and I'll try to keep it short. I think my dog has texted me a few times, letting me know that we're supposed to be watching some show right now. Well, I don't know, I, whatever, batch the rest, I think. All right, so, uh, we just wanted to go through, I've got some slides, I just wanna go through some, hit on some points of things we've done so far this year, and then I wanna introduce a few folks to you. One of the things we've done this year is that we've implemented Gaggle, which is for our mental health for our students, and what that does is it basically runs an algorithm on our students' email and on their Google Drive to search for key phrases of, of suicide, self-harm, things of that set nature, and then it documents it for us. And I think one of the most important parts of this is it's allowed for these conversations to happen between either our admin and our students, or our counselors and our students. So, there's violations where if they're looking up inappropriate material, or they're typing inappropriate things, it'll send them an email, hey, you're violating the acceptable use policy, you know, please don't do this again. And then there's other ones where it's self-harm, where we have the guidance counselors or the admin reach out to those students, and within twenty-four hours, if it's not a super serious event, and that way they have these conversations where we have documented. And then we've had some serious events, events, I think we've had two, where we've been able to reach students where some certain situations have happened that we not have known otherwise on things it does. So, it's just part of a, something we're trying to do to provide mental health for our students. All right, some of the highlights from this year so far, through the safety grant through DOJ one and DOJ two, we've been able to purchase fifty new surveillance cameras that have been deployed throughout the district. We've also been able to build three new video servants, surveillance servers, which is allows us to hold information longer than we have been before. So, if we were only able to hold information on videos for like thirty days previously, we've been able to double and triple that amount, so that we were able to hold the information longer. We also, just to prove today that we, this is, we figured out how to get this officially done, was there's gonna be a new entrance for the students here at the high school that'll look exactly like the district entrance, so that way it'll be a buzz system, it'll be over in the student section over there where they park, and they'll have to be buzzed in when they come late, and there'll be a TV monitor, just like there is now in the main office where they'll get let in. And that'll alleviate some of the problems that, when we talked with previous principals and current principals, of students coming in later in the day, as they come in and out, to kind of reduce some of that traffic from students parking out in this area.
Steve, when you say there are fifty new surveillance cameras, are those fifty old sites and just new equipment?
No, so this would be, like, the chain didn't have any, so this would be putting a whole new system in at the chain, inside and outside. It would be replacing some of the older ones, that aren't maybe like a four K quality, so the quality's been upgraded in all of the other ones that we've been working on, and to try to cover all the dead spots that we still had within the district. Also, we've just implemented WeVideo for all students to use with their Chromebooks, and this will allow them to do video creation, any place, anytime, anywhere, but still be underneath the umbrella of the district. It's basically a program that runs on their Chromebook in the background, in the cloud, so that way they'll have that opportunity, so whether it's on their phone, whether it's on their Chromebook, they'll be able to turn that into Google, um, the classroom, so that way they can work seamlessly with their teacher on that. That's always been something we've been asked about, is how can we do easy video creation? And that's probably the easiest tool that we can use, with still being able to get that piece accomplished.
Sure with me, if you would, maybe the others are familiar with it, but WeVideo would be?
WeVideo would be using any kind, it's a video editing program. So, they could use their phone, they could use a camera, they can use the camera on their Chromebook to record themselves, they also could just record their screen, so if they wanted to give a demonstration to a teacher of what they're thinking, it can record the screen, it could also do a webcast.
Okay, I wasn't clear if it was a FaceTime or Skype or whatever type thing to communicate, or if it was video capture.
Yep, video capture.
Thank you.
Also, some of the grants we've been able to do this year through the state of Wisconsin, the personal electronics computing grant, that's for freshmen, that's for, helps our one-to-one program, for every freshman that's in our district, we get a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's gonna be good for the next four years, we're using that to help offset our one-to-one program at the freshman level, so like this year, that accounted for nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, and then we were able to apply that to the Chromebooks that we bought. Now, the way that grant works is, is it's, we, they give us that much, we have to match it, and so that worked out perfect for our one-to-one program, 'cause that, that'll cover it then, we pay for half, that covers the other half. We were also lucky enough to get round thirteen, am I right on that? Round thirteen WTI grant, and this is for twenty thousand dollars for maker spaces at the WLC and at the middle school, so that stuff has mainly been purchased, and it's starting to roll out, and you think you're gonna be pretty excited when you see some of those cool things that they're gonna be able to do with some of the new technologies. We also purchased fifteen KJ hotspots for students that can check out that don't have internet, so if, this would be more in the rural areas where they don't have that access, they can check these out from the library, and they can still do their work from home, and it's worked out pretty nice. We had them start checking out second semester, they've been used pretty consistently, and they do, we did put some limits on them, so that way they couldn't just run them non-stop because we do pay for the, the bandwidth, and then we have it shut off at certain times 'cause that was one of the things we felt that, we didn't want students using these after midnight, and we didn't think that they needed to have that, but we wanted to make sure they still have that access, which has helped us in a few incidents, incid- incidents? So far this year, where we've had students that have had the, maybe have had some kind of issues, where they're working outside the school, where they've been able, we've been able to work with parents, so that way they're able to continue that education.
Steve, do you have any idea what the percentage of our students is that do not have internet service at home?
It's close to thirty percent.
So, one out of three?
Yes. We also, we're able to, through E-Rate, we were able to purchase a new Wi-Fi access controller, that'll be going online, that'll just help prevent some of the future things that we were gonna run into with the more devices we add on and on.
Do these hotspots, do they prevent them from utilizing that to just like watch YouTube videos, or surf Facebook and stuff, they actually have to use it for homework?
Yep, the way we set it up is they have a, a dashboard, KJ does, that I log into, and I set up what I could do, so that way it was like no social media. I did let YouTube go, but it basically, if you use more than two hundred and fifty megabytes, it basically is done for the day. So, they're, they're told that, and so if you just sit and watch videos, it's gonna chew right through that really quick, and it says you hit your limit for the day.
Do you find the drone almost always all rented out, or all checked out?
Not all, but we have had, even, probably half at a time, so of the fifteen, probably seven or eight.
What do you think the percentage of students is at the high school that has a cellphone in and out?
I'd have to look, um, we'd have to kind of map that out, what that looks like.
Do you think most of them, or?
I think, I can't answer that, for sure.
Maybe Abby will have to weigh in on how many students in the high school have a cellphone.
Huh, um, I'd say it's probably a great majority, but, um, it's also probably less than you guys might think, like with the, like the modern generation, um, there's still actually quite a few students who obviously have flip phones, or even no phones at all. Um, so I'd say probably close to like seventy-five, eighty percent do have cell phones. But with that, there's also like, if you're doing homework, um, sometimes it won't let you log into your school account, like your school email account, and so therefore you can't get into classroom either, which is where a lot of your homework is stored, so you really can't do your homework on your phone sometimes, unless you have like a separate server you're going through.
So, you'd have to use your Chromebook?
Yeah, Chromebook or laptop or computer or something along, yeah.
Thank you.
So, we've converted from the dog name my homework to my phone name my homework.
So, let's ask Abby about, do you have internet service at your house?
Um, I got it last year, yeah, before that I didn't have it.
So, what would you have done if you didn't have, would you have to resort to what we're talking about here, and take one home, or?
When I didn't have it, I didn't, I didn't know these things existed until like five minutes ago, um, so if I would've done that, um, I would just end up, yeah, coming to school early or staying late to get my homework done, which would've made more problems for my parents, having to come and get me, 'cause I didn't have my license at the time.
And one of the nice things about the Chromebooks is you can work with them offline, but you obviously can't access the internet, but you could do all the work ahead of time and then bring it in, and that would be fun. What we're looking for currently here in the short-term future, is we're up to RFP right now for our new printing solution, so we've got that laid out, March thirty-first is the deadline for those, those have been presented, and then we'll present those with the, the group that we have looking at them. There's been a whole group of teachers and, and staff that have been working on that for about four or five months already, so that's pretty exciting. We've also worked with the business department to create a long-term solution to our one-to-one program that's sustainable for many years to come, but that's out there. We're updating all of our computers to Windows ten this summer, and we're also inventory of all of our devices and technology within the district, that'll hopefully be completed by the end of summer, so all those will be logged into our Destiny Resource Manager.
Good question, when you talk about the long-term solution to your one-to-one program, is that a long-term funding solution?
Correct.
Because are we leasing them now?
Correct.
And is that?
Now, they're gonna be on a, when we lease them, we know what the projected cost is every single year, so we can lock that in versus saying, right now there's a, a shortage on chips for Intel, so next year's devices will all cost more, but if we lease, we can also know that this is what it's gonna cost us per year going forward, every single year. And with the Chromebooks, they're really only good for five years, and so on a four-year res, on four-year cycle, then we're definitely able to make those efficient and make sure that we can sustain that long-term versus saying, we're gonna buy a bunch of them right now, and then we're gonna buy a bunch more in five or six years, and we're gonna hope that that gets there. And it really ends up being a probably better deal for us in the long run, 'cause then we're able to sell those back at a, at a rate, five, six thousand dollars, we'll get back at the end of those four or five years, that we can put back into it.
Steve, when a freshman comes in and gets a Chromebook, do they keep the same Chromebook for four years?
Yes.
And, um, what happens at the end of the school year?
This year, we're gonna collect them, so what'll happen is, we need to inventory them because we don't have that. Last year they were able to take them home. What we'll, what we'll do is, we'll inventory them, sticker them, tag them, and make sure that we know who's got them, so that way we get everything back. Now, going forward, what we wanna make sure is like in August, we have students that start AP classes, so we wanna make sure if they wanna come check them out, they can definitely come check them out before they have to do that. And if they're in summer school, we will have a set available to them to check out to still be able to use.
But not necessarily their own?
Might not be their own, might be one of the older ones at that point, just to use for the summertime, and then they would get their other ones back. And that's pretty common, because of what they try to do is, that's two or three months where they're not used, and we know that they're not, maybe in the back of a truck, and we may, we know that they're gonna end up back at school versus a student leaves, and also we, there's nothing we could do, it's like a lost textbook at that time, where we would just have to eat that cost. And last year we lost fifteen devices, when they got to take them home all summer, and it took a long time for us to track those down, and most of them we did not get back. So, that's just that other part of, of how do we keep the resources in the district? Now for the fun part. So, I wanna introduce probably three of the rock stars here, and we'll pack them among many, that the district has, that have definitely made my, my nine months here better, because they've been able to be a great sounding board.
Long pause there.
They've had, they've been a good sounding board, they, they're great leaders, and, um, they stayed here for a couple hours. So, Crystal Vita, Art Schultz, and Stephanie Knuth, they're our tech integrators for the district at the different levels, and what they're gonna do is, and I, and I hope you participate in this, is they're, we're gonna go on a little VR field trip, and they're gonna demonstrate some of these merging technologies, and how we can use some of these in the classroom and the different curriculums. So, I'll let them take over.
And actually, we have Patty Keffer working with the third graders on a, on a VR field trip in, I don't know how long ago this one, this particular image was taken of, but we've been using this particular set for a little bit more than a year.
Did you wipe out all of the little, little?
Yes, the kids clean them, every single time they use them, yeah, I make them share a wipe between four kids to maximize our.
So, if you don't know what virtual reality is, all this kind of fills in, virtual reality or VR is a three D simulation of a real-world environment, or maybe even a make-believe, it could be something as simple, there are even ports of virtual reality even for more fun games out there. But when we think about, we have transportation problems in the district, being able to go to certain places, and virtual reality gives us an opportunity to take our students somewhere else. Sometimes it allows us to take, takes places in history, allows us to take them places that we're not gonna be able to get that international flight for our students, I'm sorry, it's just not gonna happen. Um, so our VR, VR headsets are powered by the Google Expeditions application, and, which has over nine hundred simulations, and there's more on the way, and there's other things going on with that anyway, so I'm gonna try to switch into the mode of getting things up and rolling, and making sure the simulation's working.
So, we're gonna.
Man's looking for the whole thing on the slide.
So, you may have to open your device and turn it on. It's just magnetic, so you can just pop it open.
So, what you're seeing up here is what the teachers would see, didn't you see the smiley faces of what people are looking at in the simulator?
So, turn it on, top of the device, I know it's not an iPhone. And then swipe up from the bottom, and then you're looking for an orange flag.
So, if it says connecting, it's connected?
Yep. You wanted to say connecting, or?
Hopefully it's gonna come up.
I do, but it's not.
So, you're inside the International Space Station here, which is kind of hard to get us, to get a bus to go there.
So, actually, our first graders just went to the planetarium, and they're having science day on Friday, so we're gonna bust this kit out. Actually, one of the teachers has been trained on how to do this, and she's going to do it herself now, and she's gonna take the kids to the International Space Station, and then we'll show you just a couple scenes from another one, which is some planets, so you can see the entire, our solar system.
So, also you can use, um, on the teacher end, you can highlight a particular part by putting a swiggle on the page, and people should be able to see that, hey, take a look at, at that part there. The nice part about having some of these things up there is that the teachers can help guide drawing attention to parts in the virtual reality experiment. So, if I push a button, it actually draws attention, that's their dining table, and it should show you a little spot on the thing. In it? So, it should give you a little arrow pointing you to a particular thing. So, you might have to move your head around to see it? So, over where it's pointing now is where their camera lenses.
It's fun to watch the kids do this 'cause they start walking around.
So, we do have to have some safety protocols with the kids, reminding them, hey, you know, let's have two hands on the, on the viewers, let's make sure that we're trying to stay put, because they might start running into each other if they're not paying attention to where they're going. We have the same problems in the hallways with our students anyway, they're, but they might be looking at their phone and texting and walking at the same time. No different.
No, no, I'm just looking at all the different options, sorry.
Do you want me to switch to the other simulation video?
I know everybody in the district, I'm really using it a lot with elementary right now, but, yeah, and you feature it in the entire district.
All right, so now I'm putting you guys up into the solar system. And, and here we can look at, here's, pointing us off to the Milky Way, and you guys are picking this up at, at the lightning pace here, you're finding your way, find the Milky Way. The nice part about Google Expeditions is it gives us a script on the side here about what Google's written, uh, these are curated by, by many different, uh, parts, I'm sorry, many different museums and whatnot around the, the planet here. and whatnot around the planet here, giving us the best information and hopefully better script writing than what I can do on the cuff right now. So there we've got the sun, it'll show us where Mercury is, and we can move on through to see...
And so in that case, you can always take the phone out and see it like Art is seeing it right now. So if kids do get motion sick, or, it's more stopping adults that get motion sick. But it's more the adults that get like motion sickness. Kids seem fine, like they're resilient.
Do we have another headset that's working? This one's being a little bit rocky. So...
And then there's also somewhere you move.
So are there any questions that you'd have about virtual reality and how it's being deployed around the district?
One of the really nice things is they can take them like from Egypt, they can take them into, you know, the Amazon, they can take them to these places that they wouldn't normally get to see.
So how many of these you have?
We have a thirty-pack, one kit with thirty in, yep.
And we're sharing that between three of the four buildings at the moment.
And what does an individual one cost approximately?
The entire kit was roughly ten thousand dollars. You can buy these for any phone, but our problem was like, the phones to put in the devices aren't cheap. And our cheapest route was to purchase a kit through Best Buy. So that's what we ended up doing.
So, I mean, we have seen other districts using iPod touches as the device inside of it, but it gives you a smaller display. The, these particular tablets are made by, I think they're Samsung's?
Yep.
Can't remember. But they give us a little bit bigger screen size to get us moving along.
So when you bought the package that had all of these viewers?
Yep.
Do you, do you get the program with all these things, the rainforest, the earth, the whatever?
Yeah, this is a free program. No, yep, it's a free program that anybody could use, whether or not it was, you know...
If you wanted to use this at home tonight with your own children, all you need is a smartphone and the Google Expeditions app. You might want some tougher viewer. I've seen the viewers themselves for about five dollars at Walmart.
And they all started out as like cardboard from Google.
Yeah.
So could wearing these be dangerous for like a child who might have a wandering eye issue or be prone to, you know, being cross-eyed or something?
Obviously, there's always a safety concern with any technology in a school. But some of the things we remind students to be aware, be mindful of how they're feeling at the moment. And if they are feeling dizzy, to sit down, take the viewer off their eyes.
And if we had that case, we would certainly research it more and find out if it was appropriate for that child.
And there's a, like it's recommended age. Start, yeah. They wouldn't want to use them with four cases.
Yeah, my limit is end of first grade and up. And for very short times. I wouldn't spend an hour looking at things on VR. Although there is also a Discovery Channel app on that where you can be like immersed in video. So Shark Week, there were all the Shark Week programs.
Now, we're not mainly talking here as well about, we're not talking about just science and going into space. There are also many art galleries that are, that are placed within the Google Expeditions application. You can pretty much pull up almost every painting that's in the Louvre through, through the system. So, and you can get in much, much closer to the painting than what you could actually do if you were there in person. You can actually see the paint tracks in detail if you wanted to.
You can also go and use the Google Earth app as a VR. So you can go anywhere in the world and, not anywhere, but many places in the world and view what it would be like to be there. Many places our students probably will never go.
And have the 360?
Yeah, yep. And street view to move around. Yep.
That, I believe, is a lot...
There's different apps, there's different apps that use it. What we're doing right now doesn't...
Some of them, I'd say, have an adjustment in here for the two lenses, the lenses down the middle as well.
This is awesome.
Another example, at the high school, they went to the National Mall using...
The Smithsonian, for instance, that's our...
Yep, and when Patty was up there, she was using it with third graders doing a VR on bridges because they had just studied structural bridges. So as she went through, they were naming off the features of the bridges and what types they were. So it was a really cool way to review while seeing actual bridges in three dimensions.
And I'm currently working on expedition with seventh grade for the Industrial Revolution. So we're going back in time. Can't exactly take a bus back in time, so they'll make that.
And the expeditions are just continuing to grow. It's a crowdsourced thing. I was, I just came from the Google conference and there's actually schools that are going out to local businesses with their 360 camera and taking shots and they have a whole website. So it's, it's just gonna keep growing and growing for more opportunities. So it's not something that's like, you know, has an end in sight.
Can you show moving videos on here?
Yes.
It, it's all in the app, like the expedition is like what you just saw.
And what is the app?
Well, the app that we're using is Google Expedition. But there's other apps, like there's a cell app that would just be looking at cells. And I mean, it's kind of like the sky's the limit for what you can find.
And there are opportunities for students to build their own tours through Google Tour Builder, where they can actually start creating some, the stuff about maybe Opaque, Shanna Lakes. And we could actually have them out there building a tour for maybe our tours in, in our local community. It really depends on how far do we wanna run with this technology.
Can you make your own tours?
Yes.
And make it students make?
Yep, so the conference again that I was at, they have like a maple syrup tour that the school district put together because maybe they always can't get out there. Heritage Hill in Green Bay, they went and they did 360 shots of this and made a tour of it. The Cranberry Boggs. So they created that, so...
Do we have that equipment right now?
We do not, no. But it's, I mean, it's just really a matter of having a camera that does the 360 shot. And you could even do it with your phone, I'm sure you've seen people, or on Facebook, you see the photos where, so you, you can do it, it's just the quality. If you want the high quality, if you have the camera, you press the button, walk out of the room and it shoots it, download it to Google and then with a tour creator, you can build your own.
And it is something that we are investigating, it's just finding the right, the best model for the bike.
Yep, and I went on maternity leave in December before I could ask our PTG for three cameras. My plan was one really high-quality one and then two lower-quality ones for students to check out and take, like when they go on vacation. So when they come back, we can see what they saw. So that's, I need to get back on that in the next month.
We also have to make sure that the school appropriate that we should see what they saw.
And I know one concern that I heard about was if we're creating these tours like the Heritage Hill, well then are we still gonna take our kids to Heritage Hill and do those experiences? And yes, we would. But it's a great like pre, let's talk about it, let's look at it. And then you go and you see it and then you can pull it up again and have post-discussions, so...
And we did that last year with fourth grade before they went to the Capitol in Madison. We, we didn't have these yet, so we just did it on iPads, which was fine. And they had to see the Capitol and many of them, most of them had never been there. So it was really neat for them to be able to experience that before actually experiencing it.
Did I see students standing up while they were using these and walking around?
No, we wouldn't walk around. No, I instruct them to stand this far away from each other and stand in one spot, with two hands on their butt.
They can turn around.
Yes, yep, up and down.
And if you know you have a kid that struggles with something, you know, give them a swivel chair.
Or if you do have that motion sickness, I sit in this little chair when I do it with kids. Any other questions?
Well, thank you for the introduction of VR.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, it is. Excellent focus.
Oh, that was bad.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion in second, any discussion?
I, maybe Greg, you clarify this. I see that, I'm gonna talk about the last one, the CISA V contract for next year. So our current amount this year is hundred-six-thousand-eight-sixty-nine. And next year's contract is more than one-ninety-five-four-fifty-two. Is some of that being offset by money we're getting from the alternates? Or is the contract just went up that much?
It went up, and marine concerns speak for this, but with the advent of the elementary program, we purchased three seats in that program. And if we reuse them, we've got them, if we don't, then that is calculated that year.
Okay, that solves.
All right, motion second, any other questions? Roll call.
Heather?
Aye.
Vivendi?
Aye.
Mark Goldis?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Sandy Manley? Yes. Meester Martin? Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Was that CISA V in the, in the, intended? Okay, I wasn't sure if that was separate.
Okay.
Can you condense it?
Yes. I move a German to the closed session in recording group's house. And that's the site, we're making five, parent one, parent B, parent C, and parent F. Considering dismissal, devotion, licensing, or discipline of any public employee or person licensed by orders issued for the investigation of charges against such person. Or considering the grant or denial of tenure for a university faculty member in the taking of formal action under such manner, provided that faculty have the right of public employee or person license to give an actual notice of any evidentiary hearing, which may be held prior to final action being taken and of any meeting of which final action may be taken. The notice shall contain a statement that the person has the right to demand that the evidentiary hearing or meeting be held in open session. This paragraph and paragraph parent F do not apply to such evidentiary hearing or meeting where the employee or person licensed requests that in open session be called. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee who, which the number of body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph parent B applies, which, if discussed, the public would like, be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations specifically to discuss possible preliminary non-adjuvant and consider recommendation from personnel community.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, motion being to adjourn in closed session according to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent B, parent C, and parent F. Roll call.
Heather?
Aye.
Sweetaker?
Aye.
Mark Goldis?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Sandy Manley?
Yes.
Meester Martin?
Aye.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, we will take about, we are adjourned into closed session. We will take about four minutes, or whatever time you need to break down the camera.
You got four minutes.